All right, I'm going to call the order. Board of Education meeting, September 23rd, 2021. John, take attendance.
All board members are present.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education amend the agenda to immediately consider the following motion before public comment today. The Board of Education remove Paul Cullen from the position of President of the Bloomfield School Board of Education and all board offices effective immediately and restrict his participation in any officer position or committee chair for the period of one calendar year.
I second the motion.
Here we have discussion now. Okay, I have a statement. So I'm assuming these are the facts. Community member, myself, Paul Cullen, member of the Bloomfield School Board of Education and its president, received a list of individuals, Bloomfield School District anti-mask list that apparently has been circulating around the community, and I was asked to send the list to the district and the police liaison. Since this was viewed by some individuals as a hate crime against 97 families that were listed, if this and felt danger of some reprisals, the list continued to circulate around the community for some time. I sent the list to Superintendent Watson, the district superintendent, and asked him to send this to the police liaison to investigate who created the list and if a criminal act has occurred. Mr. Watson then sent the list to the officer and asked her to investigate the list. The officer requested any screenshots or anything that could help with the investigation. Community members sent, myself, various Facebook screenshots that may have helped in identifying who created the list and began to send me the list. I compiled and sent the officer some screenshots that I have received. A board member called myself and indicated that a person being investigated for creating and disseminating the list reached out to the member to say that I was targeting her in an investigation by the police. At the point in time, I proceeded to send the full board the list and explain what had happened up until that time. The community person who created the list admitted to starting the list and publicly disseminated that with no malice intent to do so. Now, the same person had sent an email indicating she had justification for a lawsuit against myself and the district and wanted me to publicly apologize to her. Two board members called me demanding that all information provided to the liaison officer be sent to them. I refused, saying was part of a current investigation. These board members said that I violated the board operating policy and procedure and have requested a closed meeting prior to the meeting today that we just attended. So, question, did I violate any board policy or board operating procedure? Answer no.
Can I request a close of the debate? Can we consider this motion? Are we going to get a vote?
I still have, I still have something I'd like to read.
All we're talking about at this point is just putting it on the agenda.
I still have, I still have a statement to say. The role of the school board is specifically outlined in bylaws, policy, and operating procedures. And these very important documents specifically outlines the fact that the president of the board may consult with the superintendent and/or legal counsel prior to any presentation to the entire board. Furthermore, our guiding documents specifically outline confidentiality for those that come to us with issues so that we can determine all the facts before it's brought to the board for review and action. This is exactly what I did as president of the board. Once the facts are laid out, then the specific issue would be determined if there is an issue requiring further discussion or action. These specific guidelines are what I followed to the letter. If you have any issue with my conduct, then you have issues with our guiding documents. Two, you have put yourself and the school district in jeopardy. I suggest every board member review the obligations as elected board members as well as the BHSD, Bylaws, Policy, and Operating Procedures. When you do so, you realize that our obligation as board members to gather all the facts and then discuss them, finally culminating in an action or inaction, although one of the primary responsibilities is to ensure the safety of our school community from threats, actions, and even harassment. I suggested each board member that disagrees with my statement, please review the district paragraph of discrimination and harassment. The entire paragraph deals with the Michigan Elliott Lawson statutes as well as any other basis prohibited by law. One of those bases is law is harassment that could cause a victim to suffer emotional distress. Therefore, when a list, any list of some sort, which students and parents is distributed to our school community or on school property are prohibited again by our policies, we have an obligation to understand the complaints for those in our school community that may be affected. Again, I stress our bylaws and policy, specifically page 36 that discusses complaints from our community members. Therefore, I followed our guiding documents and asked the superintendent to have our school liaison officer inform us if there's anything criminal with the formation of this list. Asking for an investigation to a situation without malice does not create any legal liability or defamation. Actually, the threats of the lawsuit are frivolous and chilling to any whistleblower that acts for a determination of an act. It's amazing that in the era where we tell our students that if they see something, say something, we do not expect the opposite. More importantly, I think our legal counsel can explain the elements of defamation, and you will see that I have not violated any ten of my duties and that our district is doing the right thing in getting to the bottom of the situation. Three, when you receive a public complaint, you should have contacted the rest of the board, and when board members ask you for the background and information for the liaison complaint, should have shared with the board members. Again, this is covered by the bylaws, policy, and operating procedures very clearly. First, section 3A, 3D of our board operating procedures specifically states that board members may respond to others if they make it clear they are speaking on their own behalf and not for the board. Secondly, our code of ethics describes our individual duties as board members that all complaints should involve the superintendent. That's what I did. Any action should be first examined and investigated if it could be viewed as detrimental to the students, community, or the district. Thirdly, section 3A, 1B of our operating procedures states that any information request should be made through the superintendent and not through any board member. For reports, some of our board members rushed to the police and voided the police report is troubling. Fourth, section 3AIC discussed that there is no exception to privacy in our official discussion. We should not accuse or target harassed board members that may not agree with the position we take. A proper function of the board is not to discuss these issues with the community member in question, especially when the person threatens legal action. In other words, once any board member was informed such threats of legal action, board members should have notified the superintendent and not discussed the issue with the community member in question. The issue is one of right over wrong. It is right for us to determine and discuss the list and if any laws or civil actions have been committed. More importantly, I would ask that each member review the board bylaws, procedures, and operating procedures to make sure that you follow them to the letter before we accuse others of not doing so when it actually the acts are conversed to your accusations. Thank you. My statement.
Can we close the debate and vote on whether we want to consider the motion?
So, to be clear, it's just amending the agenda to add the motion?
That's right.
Okay. So I believe I stopped.
Mr. President, please run the meeting.
We have, we have a motion. We have a second. We have the debate. Anyone else have any comments? Debate is closed. Call for a vote.
Am I going first?
We'll go, we'll do roll call on vote. Seba?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
I'm a no. Howard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, be on the agenda.
Okay, so he asked for it immediately, so it would be now?
I asked for it to be before public comment on today's agenda.
Okay.
All right, my motion is as follows. For violations of Board Policy 1001, sections entitled Role of Individual Board Members, Code of Ethics, and President. For violation of Board Policy 1002, section entitled Meeting Procedure Voting. For violations of Board Operating Procedures, Article 2B10A and 3A2B2. And for violation of the Open Meetings Act, Section 15.2632. Pursuant to Board Policy 1001, sections Removal from Officer Position and Discipline and Removal and Pursuant to Board Operating Procedures, Section 4F7. I move that the Board of Education remove Paul Cullen from the position of President of the Bloomfield School Board of Education and all board offices effective immediately and restrict his participation in any officer position or committee chair for the period of one calendar year. I would like to, sorry, go ahead.
I'll second your discussion.
I'd like to make a statement. Firstly, I wish to emphasize to our community that this action is an extremely difficult necessary one. I've been on the board for just nine months, and I will be the first to admit President Cullen has been a very helpful guide who made my entry on this board a very straightforward one. But our president has made some choices over the last few weeks that make me question his leadership. Unbeknownst to this board, President Cullen made a unilateral decision about two weeks ago to file a police report about a list of community members made by a parent. To be clear, we're not talking about the list of community members here. We are discussing our president's actions, and here are the bare facts as they relate to the BHS Board of Education. The board was neither informed nor was its concurrence sought before our president chose to contact law enforcement. After nearly one week of going to the, or actually two weeks of going to the police without informing us, our president is yet to share the details of his communication to all of his fellow board members despite repeated requests. Now, I will tell you, the first thing that all new school board members learn when we join a school board of seven is that none of us has the ability to act alone. This is the most basic, fundamental tenet of board service. It is reiterated multiple times in state law, in board policy, board operating procedures, and our code of ethics. Before taking any action, the board must be presented with all relevant information and the opportunity to deliberate and vote in a meeting open to the public. Violations can result in serious consequences for the district, our students, our staff, and fellow board trustees. Mr. President, by your unilateral action, you have violated multiple board policies, our board operating procedures, our code of ethics, and our trust in you. Your actions have taken the focus off from substantive matters, sowed more division in the community, and have exposed the district to potential legal liability and in addition to unwarranted press scrutiny. I do not take this motion to remove you from your leadership role lightly, but came to this conclusion only after careful consideration and for significant cause. Hence, I'm asking my fellow board members to take note of our president's action while you consider my motion. I'd like to wrap up my statement by saying that we serve the community as a team, and we want the best for our students. It's our hope and intention that we can remain focused on serving our students and making collaborative, well-researched decisions on matters related to achievement and being responsible financial custodians. This can only happen if we're transparent, respectful of all opinions, and follow the rules and norms of board operations. Lastly, as a community that embraces restorative practices, we invite and encourage all members of the community feeling harmed to participate in restorative work such that it will promote healing. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? I have some comments. So my comments are, as I, I do not think I violated any board operating procedures, policies, or bylaws. I acted in the best interest of our community. Community member came to me. As we tell our students or anyone, see something, say something. Community member was at risk, felt there's a safety concern. I immediately went to our superintendent. Superintendent shared the information. Police liaison officer asked me for information in an investigation, which I provided. The investigation ended up finding the person who started this list. I didn't know what the intent was, but that was the job of the investigation. I stand by what I did, and if any of you think what I did wrong, I'd like to hear it. The goal right now of me is to make sure that all of this, from a community perspective, stops posting things on social media, sending things out that can be considered by anyone as a hate crime. I stand by what I did, and I do not think I violated, from what I said earlier on today, any of our board operating procedures, policies, or bylaws. I did what I thought was in the best interest of our community and the safety, which is what we tell our students time and time again. See something, say something. Do not be afraid because of something right now, which is going to be happening right now to me. I think we're sending a horrible message to our community and students by what you're doing to me.
In this case, I think it is important to make the distinction between see something, say something, do something when an imminent physical or verbal threat is at hand versus this situation where there was no threat, there was no hate crime, there was no imminent danger. It was a perception and an opinion that was not given its due diligence for consideration, unfortunately, by yourself, but for which this board would have been, should have been informed and at which point rationality and the right course of action would have prevailed.
Which would have been what? What would you have done?
Well, I don't know.
What would you have done if you had presented the list?
I don't know because I wasn't consulted, but the term due diligence really sticks out in my mind. Okay, it's one thing.
It was an imminent harm to a community member who came to me.
Can we not have that? Yes. That is, that is your opinion, sir, and that is not what happened in reality. So that is the basis for the, our state of being so aggrieved at the violation of the policy, because this is the exact kind of situation for which these policies and board operating procedures and the Open Meetings Act preventing decisions outside of open meetings, that's why they're there.
I did not, I indicated in my statement, I did not violate any policies or board operating procedures, and I indicated why, and I quoted sections.
So, someone asked for the police report, right? In the police report, now this is a narrative, it doesn't mean that this is what you did or said, but it says that you stated the five possible people, that you came up with people that might be.
Based on Facebook profiles that I sent as part of the investigation.
I'm sorry. So you did your own profiling to figure out who might be responsible for this list?
That's incorrect. That guy from community members.
Paul, he's trying to speak.
And so what I'm saying is, the report goes on to say that Mr. Cullen states these people have been very vocal for masking and have denounced his actions and have been critical of him as the school board president in general. Is that accurate? Is that what you told the police liaison officer?
I did not say these people were pro-masking. I said, yes, I sent screenshots that they were critical of me and have defaced me and defaced me on social media, and I sent, I sent those screenshots as well.
Well, you can see how that obviously seriously confuses the issue of your own motivation versus imminent threat.
It's not, it's not my own motivation. That was, community members sent me a various amount of screenshots that actually ultimately led to the person who started the list admitting to it.
I think for me. Go ahead, finish, John.
I'm just confused as to what made you believe that there was an imminent threat and that you determined that you should not contact any of the other board members before making an action.
Because the community member said there was an imminent threat to them.
And if they asked you to jump off the Brooklyn Bridge?
That's irrelevant. That's not appropriate.
I apologize.
Did you ask the community member if they, or suggest that they go directly to the police if they felt they were in imminent danger?
They asked me to go to the police directly.
But that's not what we do as a board.
I sent it to our superintendent. I sent it to the superintendent and asked him to send it to the police liaison officer, which he did. The police liaison officer asked me for anything that can help or find who did this, and I did it.
Right, but I'm asking, Paul, I'm asking if you, if you communicated with the community member who indicated they felt they were in imminent danger, why wouldn't you suggest they go directly themselves to the police?
They asked me to go to the police, and I did.
But why, I'm asking? Don't you think if they're in imminent danger, they need the police, not the school board president?
And your thoughts, Mr. President, on that?
I'm not answering that. They asked me to go to the police, and I did. I don't know why they didn't go to the police. I don't know why. And maybe they did, I don't know.
You didn't, but you didn't ask them to go to the police themselves. Call 911.
Did you escort them to the police? Did you just do it on your own? This was just your own? Let me go.
They asked, they asked me to send the list to the police, and that's what happened.
So I guess my question is, we trust in the process, and so the process was we, we communicate with one another, we, you know, communicate with our superintendent, and we trust that the actions that our superintendent will take and the information he will bring back to the entire board, so we're all kept in the know, would be sufficient enough for us to have a conversation about. I think we went through months of understanding what trust means, and for me, not being kept in the loop when we've gone through this process of creating our board guiding policies and practices, that I just believe that there was a lot of violation, not just in the policies, but in our trust in your leadership, well, my personal trust in your leadership and being able to communicate with me when there is an issue that we need to discuss as a full board. So I think that the omission of accepting responsibility is yet another error for me, that today you are accepting responsibilities for actions that were taken, which says a lot, at least to me. And we've asked for you to answer the questions of the police report that was filed. John laid it out, and you disagreed with what was in the contents of the letter. So I'm just trying to understand, what point are you going to share information with your board members so we're all on the same page and we're not kept in the dark? But you want us to not vote to remove you as president?
It was part of an investigation, and the matter was time-sensitive.
After the police report was issued and the investigation was closed, we asked you to share with us your communications with the police, and you refused, and you still refuse. And what is the reason for that?
It's a part of, it was part of an investigation, and it's closed.
But after an investigation is closed.
What are you, what are you looking for in what I sent as part of the investigation? What do you think is there?
I don't know what's there, and that's the problem.
Well, there's nothing there.
All, all official communications with law enforcement, with the press, as our official spokesperson, must be shared with the full board.
And when the press came to me, did I immediately share it with the full board and Superintendent Watson for comment?
Yes, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about requests for communications that should have been shared with us at the outset, that to my knowledge today will never be shared, so be it.
I have an expectation of privacy, a whistleblower under our policy, you know, there's an expectation of privacy.
If I could make a comment, we had requested the president to redact the name of the individual person who approached him and then proceed to share the details of the communication that has yet to be shared. Mr. President, let me ask you this. The report was filed on a certain day with the police. At no point did we hear from you after the fact, other than get a text about a list with no reference made to a police complaint. We had to hear about it from frantic board, I mean, community members who were being investigated by police.
And why were you talking to a community member that was being investigated by police?
We received an email, Paul.
We got an email.
We've gotten calls, we've gotten emails, we've gotten contacted by them, very concerned. And we were all flat-footed.
It was, it was, it was an investigation, and I was awaiting the outcome of the investigation as I did as a whistleblower.
So a simple email to us to say.
A whistleblower?
But a simple email to us to say, hello, I contacted the police. By the way, there is an investigation underway about, you could have explained that to us, but we got zero from you. How is that right?
And I did, from a process point of view, indicate to the full board, I apologize from a process point of view, that I should have informed you of what I was doing, and I do apologize for that.
You should have consulted before you did any, not informed us.
Correct. If I consulted, would you have told me not to do what I did? Possibly.
I don't know, but we needed the opportunity to have a dialogue in the meeting.
As appropriate, as is the appropriate process.
Correct.
You, from what I understand, we, you spoke with the police on Friday, September 10th. We had not heard from you directly for a week?
It wasn't a week, it was Tuesday. It was Friday. There was a weekend, and it was on Tuesday.
Right, but as to.
One and a half working days.
As to answering our request for the communications, which probably occurred on Tuesday, we had not heard from you and had to reach out to you on Friday, September 17th to find out what was going on. And I'm sorry, but these are not the actions of a board president.
It was, again, part of an investigation. I was a whistleblower, part of an investigation.
The investigation is over and was over when we asked you for the communications.
You keep referring to yourself as a whistleblower. I'm not sure what you mean by that, but I do want to say, I don't disagree that making lists of fellow community members is the morally right thing to do, but I also think that when you receive such a thing, and you've yet to say what this imminent threat is of, that, why did you need to send it to the police immediately? Or why didn't you call 911 if there was an immediate threat, I guess? If it was immediate, it was immediate. If it wasn't, then you could have consulted the board. And I'm speaking. You could have contacted the board for discussion if the threat wasn't immediate. If the threat was immediate, you would have called 911.
The community member mentioned to me that there was a safety concern, and I immediately told Superintendent Watson to send it to the police liaison officer, which he did. And then liaison officer asked me for anything that can help find the person who did it, which I did, and the person was found, which I thought was the end result, is what we teach our students. Say something, see something, find something.
The police report states that the police talked to the community member, and it says, quote, "They wanted the incident documented and advised that they hadn't been threatened." So the police report says there was no threat, but you're saying there was a threat.
Yes, there was. The community member I spoke to said there was a threat.
But told the police there wasn't.
Community member told me that there was a threat. I don't know if it was a different community member that the police spoke to, not necessarily the community member that spoke to me.
I also want to be clear to anybody listening, that the police report said there was no threat. There was no hate crime.
And that was the goal, to have that being investigated. And it was. And they found the person who started the list and then made their report. That was my goal.
So why, when you received the communication from the community member, you already said that you don't know why you didn't have the community member call the police immediately themselves, but you took it upon yourself to contact the police without consulting your other board members?
No, I contacted Superintendent Watson to contact the police.
Yes, yes, but you did not talk to your fellow board members. Why was that at that time on Friday?
Because I was under an obligation from the community member who asked me to do something, and I did it.
What obligation?
The community, I'm in obligation, if they say there is a threat, you need to send this to the police, that's my obligation.
Where do you find this obligation? Is this in our policy?
As a whistleblower, whistleblower under our policy.
You're not a whistleblower. You don't meet the criteria to use that term.
So to be clear, we're more concerned about the community member who started the list than the people who are on the list.
That's absolutely not.
Irrelevant, irrelevant. Except that the chain of events unleashed on Friday, September 10th, has caused great harm to a great many persons.
Yeah, the people on the list.
On both sides of the issue.
The list was purely a list of names. That's all it was. There was absolutely no reference whatsoever to anything else other, a list of names.
And I asked the police to determine intent.
Can we not talk about the list?
Irrelevant.
Can we call the question?
Yes, call the question. President Cullen, since you're the subject of the motion, I think it is more appropriate that I preside over the vote.
So there?
Is there any further debate? I have no further questions or comments.
All right, we're going to have a roll call. All right, we're going to have a roll call vote. Siva?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Paul?
No.
Howard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. As vice president of the board, I'm going to serve as acting chair for the rest of the meeting. So we're going to move to item number two on the agenda, which is public comment. I'd like to read a statement before public comment, that it is the opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It is not a time for dialogue. If you would like a response, please provide the board with your name and contact information. You will receive a response within two weeks. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides that boards may place limits on the time allotment for an individual comment, which for our board is three minutes. In addition to making a public comment, you may also email the board at any time. It is board@bloomfield.org. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or member of the Board of their, of education in their official capacity and related to the role and responsibilities for which they are employed or serve, is otherwise, or is otherwise exempt from First Amendment protection, will be excluded from public comment. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, please identify who you represent. Thank you for taking the time to address the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education. Okay, Charles Gaba?
I will be the timer.
Okay, three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. As you know, this board knows, I've spoken in favor of a mask mandate during the COVID pandemic several times before, and I was very relieved when Superintendent Watson reinstated one just before the school year started. While many districts around the country without mask mandates have already reported hundreds or even thousands of cases this school year, BHS has, to my knowledge, so far only reported 17 among students and staff to date, thanks in large part, I presume, to the mask mandate. Recently, I joined a private chat group of, of district parents concerned about their children's health who supported a district-wide mask mandate. At some time, at some point, one of the other parents shared a list, which you've been discussing, shared a list which they had compiled for their own reference of district residents who they believe are opposed to a masking mandate and understandably, they preferred to avoid contact with. That parent specifically asked people not to share it in this private chat group, asked people specifically not to share it outside of the group, that group, ahead of time, stating that they were not trying to target anyone. Several other board members agreed, or group members agreed, clarifying that the list was purely for their own reference. I have no idea how it got out, but I didn't have anything to do with this list, nor did I share it with anyone. Yet I was included on Paul Cullen's own list, which he sent to the police department, of people who have been critical of him on social media and who were therefore apparently under suspicion when it came to having authored the list. I have a copy of that police, of the police report filed by Officer Miller with me. This is public information, I should note, in which Officer Miller states repeatedly that not a single person on the anti-mask list has been threatened or harassed in any way. She confirmed that the heading on the version of the list shared publicly was different from the original version. The police report also states that Mr. Cullen listed five people, of whom I am one, who, whom he suspected of having authored the list based purely on those people having been, quote, "very vocal for masking and having, and have denounced his actions and have been critical of him as the school board president in general." Officer Miller concludes that she reviewed the Facebook pages that Mr. Cullen listed and found no threatening remarks or anything slanderous in nature. She concludes that there was no crime of any sort committed. Based on this, she chose wisely, I appreciate this, not to list any of those names publicly, which makes sense. While I appreciate Officer Miller's discretion and will not myself name any of the other members of the chat group, I have no problem openly admitting that, yes, I'm among them. And as she rightly concluded, there was no, nothing to the story other than some parents who are concerned about the health and safety of their own children. This non-incident has now been the subject of several local news stories and has been pounced upon by a political group falsely attempting to tie several other board members to it, even though none of them had anything, none of them had any connection to it. I believe Mr. Cullen's actions have been over the top, unprofessional and unacceptable. I feel he has abused his power and wasted the resources of the board and the police department over his feelings of being hurt because not everyone thinks he's doing such a great job. And personally, I know he was just removed as president of the board. I honestly think that he should resign from the board. Thank you.
Any more public time?
Mr. Joe Kwazneski?
Hello. Thank you for your time this evening. A lot of what I was going to say, you've covered, so I won't waste your time rehashing the information that I have. I just would like to applaud the board for coming to the decision to remove Paul Cullen from president of the board. I felt that in him targeting those five individual parents, it sowed further division in our community that didn't need to happen. It gave us a black eye, having what I felt was a baseless police report filed and circulated in the media and then used as a springboard to smear board members that did what they could do to keep our children safe during a pandemic. That is not becoming of a board president. So I would like to thank you all for coming to the conclusion that you did. Thank you.
Colleen Sammet?
I'm so sorry. Um, I'm not ready yet. Can I just go a little bit later? Is that possible to go out of order?
Yeah, we have one other person, so, okay. Stephanie Kreider?
Hi, I'm here tonight as a community member and I'm also here as an advocate on behalf of some of the families who were falsely accused of a hate crime. Um, I had a prepared statement and obviously because things have changed tonight during the meeting, I'm just going to, um, you know, speak directly to you as, as it pertains to your last statements. If you have not seen the actual posts from the WhatsApp in terms of what was actually stated regarding the list, I do have the information that I can share with you. I have already shared this with the board president. I've shared this with the superintendent. And it clearly states, as an individual who was in the WhatsApp, that there was never any threat. Never any threat. Okay? The people actually say in the WhatsApp, "I really don't want to share this because I don't want it to look like it's retaliation." It says, "I don't want to single anybody out." These are the actual phrases that are in it. So if you'd like to see it, it's redacted. It doesn't have anyone's names in it. But I think this is a gap that the community has because there's this, you know, lie that's been perpetuated and spread from community members who rightfully were afraid because they were told they should be afraid. And I know I'm supposed to be addressing you, but I just want to say to the community, I get it 100% if you were told that your life was in danger, that you're going to be upset. But the reality is that somebody lied. I don't know if it was the person who took the information out of the WhatsApp and altered that list or who it was. I don't know that. But at some point, there was a lie and there's actual evidence. We don't have to debate that. It's here. The other thing I want to say is that I had an opportunity to have a conversation with our board president and I'm really sad to see what's displayed here because that wasn't my interaction when we met. And it was disclosed in terms of the type of content that was submitted to the police. And it seemed to me at that setting that it wasn't something that was pertinent to a hate crime. And so I expressed that during the meeting and I actually expressed that I thought that my, myself and other people thought he should resign. Subsequent to that, I accompanied one of the parents who was accused of the hate crime to the police department. We not only got a copy of the actual police report, but you can check, you know, she checked saying she wanted to see the file as well. In that file, I think if you have permission to see it, I'm asking you to go look at it. You don't have to rely on him to give you the information. The police department has what was forwarded to the police department. And I think that when you see that, it's going to clear up what you need to see. And it is literally screenshots of people on Facebook who are saying things that somebody doesn't like. That's literally what it is. There is no threat. There was no threat. I'm sorry that the community felt like they were in danger. I completely understand it. But these are the facts. The facts are the facts and you have the opportunity to go see it for yourself. Thank you.
Colleen Sammet?
Can I take this down when I speak? Is that all right? Hi, my name's Colleen Sammet. Um, I came here to comment on a couple of things, but just based on all the discussion, I guess I just wanted to offer maybe a different point of view than the other public comments. Um, I did read about the list and I did read the, the report that said the parent that created the list had absolutely no intent other than just kind of keeping track for her own self, family she wanted to avoid. She meant to keep, keep it private. I don't know why she shared it with one person. I don't know if it was a trusted friend or not, but, but, but this person that got it, for whatever reason, then at least from what I read, clearly wanted to make it public. That, to me, raised a red flag. Why is this person putting this list out there? I assumed it was to get a lot of negative attention on the people that have spoken out against the mask mandates. And so when I hear Paul say that a community member came to him and asked him to go to the police because they were on that list and they felt threatened, I absolutely believe that community member did feel threatened because although the person that made this list didn't intend it, intended for that reason, the person that subsequently shared it, that was my first thought. So it all went a little fast and I was trying to read all of the board policies you guys were talking about. I don't know if Paul violated these things. To be perfectly honest, I'm not sure why an official censure couldn't have done if you felt like he did not consult you, but you've taken your vote. I disagree with it. I'll just move on. Um, my next comment concerns the sex education curriculum. You are, I think you're voting to approve it tonight. Is that correct? So I went ahead and just scrolled through it because I was curious. It seemed like a perfectly fine curriculum. I really only take issue with a couple of things that stood out to me. Although it gives a lot of leeway to the teachers on how they discuss certain things, it makes such a point to talk about in the language notes and the notes about language, things like, this is one thing that really stood out to me. The terms boy and girl are used intentionally in this lesson to make it accessible for seventh grade students. Blah, blah, blah. Go on to the end. The use of more inclusive terms related to gender identity and biological sex are introduced at subsequent grade, grade levels. What I'd really like to know is how much farther do things go in high school? And then specifically, one other thing. Okay, language is really important and we've been intentionally very careful about our language throughout this curriculum. You may notice language throughout the curriculum that seems less familiar, using the pronoun "they" instead of her or him, using gender neutral names and scenarios and role plays and referring to someone with a vulva versus a girl or woman.
Can you please wrap up?
Sure, I can wrap up. This to me just really muddies the waters where they don't need to be muddied, quite honestly. And then my last thing is about the mission statement that you were going to discuss. I read the new mission statement and then the comments by the teachers and the students. And then I read what I think is going to be discussed tonight and I would just like to understand, really, the first sentence. "BHS strives to attain equality in the academic outcomes of all students." I know what I think that means. I'm not sure what all of you think that means, so I would really like to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that finishes public comment. Superintendent Report, Pat. Superintendent Watson?
Hi, just a few things to share. One, I'd like to congratulate the Transportation Department on 29 consecutive years of a perfect record in the Michigan State Police Inspection of our fleet. That is also an invitation for all of you that are here from public comment or to watch the meeting in person. We are still in desperate need of bus drivers. You would be able to drive a bus that has 29 consecutive years of a perfect record. Uh, we are, we are desperately short. You may have seen the news around Metro Detroit where some school districts are canceling routes on the East Coast. The National Guard has been called in to drive buses. So if there is anyone watching or anyone here in person that's looking for a part-time job, you could be a sub or, or drive a bus. We'd appreciate it. Also, congratulations to Conant. Conant was named 2021 National Blue Ribbon School, one of 13 schools in the state of Michigan and one of 325 recognized nationally. Also yesterday, for the first time, Bloomfield Hills High School, there was a meeting of a newly formed student senate. There are 25 students involved that spent time collaborating on how to grow the culture in the school to empower student voices and have students shape their school to be inclusive. Some back-to-school observations. This is week three of school. I've had the ability to go in every building, not the ability, the, the honor and privilege to go in every building, almost twice now. It's amazing to see our students. It's amazing to see what's going on. And a special thanks to all our staff and our teachers for everything they're doing. Some of the hands-on and creative lessons that I've seen are just incredible. Whether it was stopping by the Spanish Room at the IA, going to the third grade classes at Eastover, visiting multiple classes at East Hills with Jason Rubel, and going to Bloomfield Hills Middle School and talking to the kids at lunch about the courtyard cafeteria where they're eating lunch outside on most days and how much they enjoy that ability and just seeing them interact. And lastly, we, we welcomed to West Hills this past week, Ollie the Therapy Dog. To say Ollie was well-received by the students would be an understatement. My only disappointment is that no one let me know that Ollie was going to be at West Hills so I could have stopped by that day, Margaret. So I'm hoping in the future that, you know, I'm able to stop by and see the therapy dogs in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Watson. Number five, student intern building reports. Um, before I call our student interns up, I just want to say for, for everybody watching, this is the third year that the Bloomfield Board of Education has had student interns. It's a pretty common practice around the country and it's implemented so that they can gain the experience and exposure and also for our own purposes, that they can serve as a communications liaison between ourselves and the rest of the student body. So with that, I'd like to welcome our, our two interns for the school year, Heather Chen and Lena Jandali, up. And they're going to give us some board build, some building reports. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lena Jandali.
And I'm Heather Chen.
We are so excited to be giving the first student board intern building report. This information was assembled with the help of the Board Student Advisory Council. As you can see on our slides, each intern and council member is assigned two buildings. These reports were written by each representative student.
So we're going to start off with Bloomfield Virtual. Bloomfield Virtual started with a meet and greet for the student community on September 8th, shortly before starting classes. And Curriculum Night was held on September 13th and meet and greets between staff and families will be held this week. So far, everything has been running smoothly.
Next up, we have Bowers Academy. At Bowers, students and staff have been investigating place and the guiding questions of place-based education. We have some examples of these questions on the slide. Enrollment has grown this year and students have been spending the few weeks of school exploring the farm, meeting the animals and interacting with the Bowers community. Just a few mornings ago, one of the students prepared breakfast for Bowers as a part of the agricultural elective. They made breakfast burritos from farm-fresh ingredients. Bowers Academy will continue to investigate the many curricular opportunities that the farm has to offer through each season of the school year.
So for Bloom and preschools, although the students may be young in age, they are respecting the COVID guidelines and are working to keep each other safe. Students wear masks in class, but they're. Students wear masks in class, but there are designated breaks for those who need a few minutes without their mask. Unfortunately, the yearly harvest festival can't occur this year due to COVID, but they're working to include more field trips for the students. Parent-teacher conferences will be occurring in the first week of October. One of the main issues that Bloom and Preschools is struggling with involves the statewide educator shortage. Currently, there are 11 void positions for the staff. All this being said, the staff has really stepped up to continue making the preschool a safe, effective, and fun learning environment. Many staffers are working extra days or picking up extra hours to make up for the lack of staff. A specific, a specific group who especially has stepped up is the Kids Zone staff, who've been really amazing with their commitment and hard work.
Next up, we have Bowers Farm. Bowers Farm will be hosting two events in October. The first event will take place on October 16th and is hosted by the Bowers of, the Friends of Bowers Farm. And it is a 21-plus fundraiser called the Bourbon and Brews Festival. The big event is the Fall Festival, which will take place on October 23rd and 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It will have pumpkin picking, animal visits, live music, and much, much more. Bowers Farm is also seeking volunteers for this event, and so if you're interested, you can sign up on their website. The Bowers Farm opens, open barns, farm store and farm kitchen move to fall hours, and are open on Friday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They, they have also begun their field trips and are starting with a pocketful of history with their second graders. Bowers also hosted the IA Back-to-School Dance, which was a huge success.
And as mentioned by Mr. Watson, Conant is proud to receive the Blue Ribbon Award for their school's academic achievement, and they were one of four schools selected in Oakland County. In the coming weeks, they plan to have celebrations to appreciate and highlight the teachers and the students' hard work. Mr. Phelps is extremely appreciative of how welcoming the parents and the staff and the community have been to him. The students are excited to be back and are carefully following the COVID protocols. Conant is also working to highlight student voices. Other than the Blue Ribbon celebrations, one upcoming event is Breakfast with Buddies. This event has grown so large that they might expand it from two days to three days. And Conant really feels great about the start of the year and can't wait to see what's in store for the coming months.
Now we have East Hills Middle School. East Hills Middle School grade level meetings, which are pictured on the screen, were a huge success. They discussed the power of believing in yourself and the importance of service. They also shared their hopes and goals for the school year. East Hills has also been working to reconnect with families over the past few weeks through their curriculum nights. East Hills have a few upcoming events as well. Family Move-in Night will take place on Friday, October 1st, and the First Activity Afternoon will take place on Friday, October 8th.
For the International Academy, IA began school on August 17th and is entering its fifth week of school. Students have been enjoying the updates to the halls as benches were installed to ensure more workspace. Other significant updates include more bathroom stalls, which has helped reduce passing time traffic. IA also successfully gave a full college application workday to seniors on September 20th to help alleviate some stress. The seniors also went to Tree Runner Adventure Park for class bonding, as you can see on the slide. Lastly, the senior class is looking for some creative COVID-safe ways to fundraise for prom and are open to any suggestions from the community.
Next up, we have Eastover Elementary. At Eastover, routines are being established with a big focus on community building. Last week, they had a, a great turnout for their Curriculum Night, and it was really nice to connect with the families again. They've kicked off their social-emotional learning curriculum, working with the CASEL core competencies, and are introducing the Links program this week as well. A Link is a student who volunteers to support another student in the classroom during lunch or recess to model appropriate interactions and encourage positive behaviors. Officer Miller came to visit and brought the therapy dog Maggie, and of course, she was a big hit.
Quick question before you leave that slide. Do you guys know what the CASEL stands for? I, I just, I'm unfamiliar with that.
We will find out.
I think SEL is social-emotional learning and CAS.
Thank you, yep.
Yeah, we'll reach out to the representative and find out for you.
Creative activity, so.
So for Lone Pine, Lone Pine Elementary is holding a PTO fun run tomorrow to promote student fitness and to raise money for the PTO. Additionally, Lone Pine has established a global education team. Within the classroom, Lone Pine students are starting the year off by developing norms and goals for how they want the year to pan out. You can see on these goals on, on the screen. Students determine that treating each other fairly, sticking together, and being their best selves is, is paramount to having an optimal learning environment. Furthermore, they established academic goals for reading and math, such as improving comprehension skills and being able to solve complex math problems like division. Next up, we have the Prep Program. This past week, I had the pleasure of visiting the Prep Program. A day of prep is filled with meaningful and enriching activities that help the students increase their independence, develop social skills, and improve their executive formative skills. The day begins with a morning meeting, which gives the students time to stretch and answer some questions of the day. Following the morning meeting, Prep students get a taste of the working world. Some of the students work at Joann's, others at Nino's, and some even help care for our district's therapy dogs. The students also have access to the Practical Assessments Exploration System, or PACE Lab, where they explore life skills through hands-on experiences. When I spoke to the students, they also shared with me their favorite part about being a Prep student. Many students love the wood shop, where they create wooden crafts, such as the one that you see on the screen. The Prep students even sell these crafts, so if you're interested in supporting these local students, reach out to the Prep administrators. My visit ended with a conversation about what Prep would like to see changed. Students expressed that they would like to have more space for their sensory experiences. In fact, more space in general would benefit the program holistically.
So the Nature Center has been up and running, providing both students as well as community residents with an environment to experience nature and learn about conservation. They are planning a Halloween Nature Center Trail, which will be open to students and community members and will be organized by student volunteers. As a part of their future outlook, the Nature Center is hoping to reach out to green clubs and environmentally oriented student organizations across the district's schools. And their organization, Friends of the Johnson Nature Center, is hoping to establish a financial aid fund for students who are unable to cover the cost of its events.
West Hills Middle School. At West Hills, one of the big things that happened, that is happening right now is the new staff member, Ollie the Therapy Dog. He has been residing in Mrs. Bratson's room, fifth grade classroom, and he gets, as he gets used to the building. West Hills has been enjoying, enjoying a smooth transition, getting students back into routines, and staff are excited to see students be more social and collaborative while still keeping distance for safety purposes. For social-emotional learning, West Hills has put an explicit emphasis on this by including Warrior Time every day in students' schedules. Warrior Time is approximately 20 minutes long and is dedicated to SEL lessons, and that includes getting outside and enjoying their recess time.
So next up, we have Wing Lake. Wing Lake shared with me their goals for the year. The first goal focuses on numeracy, where students are learning early counting routines. Their second goal is literacy work, which is focused on reading books from diverse backgrounds. Their other goal is to use core language, the 32 most commonly used words in their school. Wing Lake uses a core board, which includes high-contrast icons that represent each word. An example of the core board is featured on the slide. The student government at Wing Lake will be holding their Spooky Walk on October 14th at 6:00 p.m., and it will be on the playground. Additionally, they voted earlier this month to participate in helping an organization called Kids for Peace create the world's longest paper chain. Wing Lake students will create paper chain links and mail them to California. Finally, the adult transition students are running a snack cart during the day at Wing Lake, and they also have new jobs at the farm and the nature center and are working on their Sweet Bloom's Candy Flower business.
Next up, we have Way Elementary. The Ice Cream Social was a very well-attended and huge success. The kids loved the addition of both bouncy houses and food trucks this year, with the Tattoo Kiosk being the most exciting destination. They have completed the first round of safety drills on campus. The staff did a great job with little or no skill lost after all the virtual instruction last year. Curriculum Night was also very well-attended. Each grade level presented an overview of the curriculum being taught in each classroom. On the professional development front, staff followed up their work on collective efficacy and literacy instruction from our August PD by establishing the PLC teams as they work to align best practices using the Reader's Workshop. Teams begin meeting next week with a focus on guided reading and student conferences during lessons.
I got a chance to visit BHMS earlier this week, and they have started off the year strong with a focus on transitioning students back into the building in a way that prioritizes their social-emotional learning. Mr. English and the PTO worked together to help transform the courtyard into an outdoor lunch space that can seat over 100 students. And this has allowed for a lunch environment that is safe but is still social. The school has also introduced Lancer Time, similarly to West Hills' Warrior Time. It's 20 minutes of the school day dedicated to social-emotional learning. On the screen, we have some examples of student work by BHMS fifth graders where they were asked to explore their identities. This week, I also began discussions with administration on creating an inclusive student council that will meet with me once a month to discuss student issues at BHMS. And more information about this council will be available in the coming weeks.
And finally, we have Bloomfield Hills High School. Bloomfield Hills High School has been off to a wonderful start, and as a student there now, I can say that it feels so great to be back in the classroom. A new group known as the Student Senate, which Mr. Watson brought up earlier, has, was recently started. It is a home base for all of the high schools' affinity groups. Two representatives from each affinity group are Senate members, and together, they work together to better our school environment and climate. In fact, Heather and I are honored to be representing the Student Board Council on the Senate this year, and we have high hopes for the Senate. I've spoken to several BHHS students, and many of them find great value in our once-a-week advisory period. In fact, many students value it so much that they're craving more of this self-paced study time. Potentially altering our schedule to suit these needs may pose great benefits for our students, especially as we transition back into a more normal in-person learning environment.
Just before we close out our report, I just wanted to mention that in our coming reports, we, we hope to focus even more on student voice and we hope to set up many councils within each of the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, ladies. Great job. Thank you, ladies. Any questions for our students?
No questions, but, but a comment. You, you can sit down, Lena, Heather. Thank you. I just, just a couple of thoughts. One, I, I want to thank you. It's a great reminder for the eight of us that are up here as to the why. In the last 18 months, we've had, I believe, 40 or 50 meetings. I can only think of a couple of meetings where we spent a lot of time talking about our students, talking about instruction. We've talked about a lot of things over the last 18 months. When community members reach out to me, regardless of where they fall on different things, there's one thing they all agree about. They want the best possible education for their child. They want the eight of us up here to do whatever we can to make sure that their child gets the best possible education in the school district. We only have 37 weeks left to school. It's imperative on all of us that in these next 37 weeks, that we make every week and every day count. I hope as we move forward, we can refocus our efforts on talking about students, talking about achievement, hearing from our students. How are they even doing? What do they need? Supporting our staff, supporting our teachers who have a family of their own that show up every day and give everything they have. To our bus drivers that show up every day and drive the best they can. To everyone that is doing all they can. Because at the end of the day, if we haven't taken care of our students, we failed at our mission. Because that is the only thing that matters, are the kids. They deserve it. A lot of times, as someone in, in my 50s now, I would tell my own children, you know, when I was, when I was young, I had to do this. You know what? From where I sit, it is way harder being a kid now than it's ever been. And the pandemic has only made it different or made it more severe. You read the research that says for a lot of children, they may not do as well as their parents. You see the recent study that says the average teenager now, the average adolescent, has the same amount of anxiety that someone that would be in a psychiatric ward in the 1950s. It's tough. While we can't control, while the community is going to get along and we see it playing out everywhere, we can control what we do for our kids. We can focus on our kids. We can make a difference to every single child, and there's no parent that disagrees with that. No one. So if the eight of us can just find a way for the next 37 weeks to focus as many conversations, and we're all in it together, that talk about what are we doing for our children? How are our children feeling? How's their staff? How are we educated? How can we support? Where are their gaps? What can we do? What are we doing well? If we can focus, I beg all of us, including myself, to hold myself accountable. If we can just focus on that, it will be best for all of us. Because then we can make a difference for the kids and parents that are in this district that bring, they are sending the best they have every single day and counting on us to do what we need to do. So Lena and Heather, I love the report. I love hearing that you visited some of the buildings. I love that you were able to bring it all together. Thank you for reminding all of us that are in education on the board. Why? We do it for you, right? Ultimately, we're responsible for you. And so we're all going to work collaboratively together to not let you or any of our students down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item six on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. John?
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the Consent Agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting of August 26, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the special meeting slash closed session of September 9, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the study session of September 9, 2021. Request to approve dispersment reports. I move that the Board of Education approve the dispersion, dispersion reports as presented. I move that the Board of Education approve the following winter tax millage rates. General operating of 2.9571 mils, commonly referred to as the Hold Harmless for principal residence exemption property, and 9.0 mils for non-principal residence property. Sinking fund millage rate of 0.3518 mils on all property. Debt service millage rate of 1.3750 mils on all property. The millage rates are required to be forwarded to the respective taxing units by September 30, 2021. I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented by Keith McDonald.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item number seven on our agenda is general discussion. Item A, preschool location discussion. Paul Wills, our Bloomfield Hills owner's rep, so he oversees financial stewardship of the bond as, as the board's representative, and Paul is employed by Plant Moran Cressa. Paul, could you just give the community like a sentence on, on Plant Moran and who you are and what you do for us? Thank you.
Absolutely. So again, my name is Paul Wills. I'm a partner with Plant Moran Cressa, and we're the Capital Projects Group within Plant Moran. We assist a lot of districts throughout the state of Michigan, acting as owner's rep or program manager when they take on a large bond program. So we work with 35 of the top 50 districts around the state of Michigan. We oversee about $3 billion in, in K-12. So also as a district resident, I'm also proud to be here to help shepherd this $200 million process going forward, so. All right, Ms. Bass. There we go. Excellent. Thank you. So this is actually kind of a recap from the May FFLA update that Trustee Kumar presented to the board. So this is really a confirmation of the preschool plan that was kind of presented from scope and design. And we're going to talk specifically about the buildings, kind of where the programs are at now, where they're going forward. And we're going to talk a little bit about the, the financials as you can relate to each of those programs. And then we'll talk about the, the schedule going forward for both of these. So really, people are saying, well, why are we here today? If you recall from that update, Bitpak 5, which is actually the Conant and Way Elementary additions renovations, there's a pre-K component to the Conant facility piece, which we were going from there. Perfect. Thank you. So again, three parts of the presentation. Again, it's very brief and it's really just an update from FFLA. Now we're at the committee as a whole. So again, from Cone Elementary School, that's going to continue to house. And again, as the district goes to that K5 model in the fall of '23, there will be a pre-K component to the existing three classrooms that are currently there. Eastover, what's going to happen is that program is going to relocate to East Hills. A middle school should become East Hills Elementary, which is a K5, and that will be backfilled with a pre, pre-K program serving the Bloomfield Preschools. So again, this just kind of shows some of the, the cores going from the four elementaries to the two middle schools and ultimately up to the high school. So Fox Hills and Bloom and Lone Pine, again, a lot of still discussions coming forth. Mr. Watson, myself, and others have kind of reached out to some of the neighbors. Again, working on some surveys to figure out what's the long-term assets for the district going forward. So not to be... So not to be forgotten at these aspects going forward. So in terms of financials, I don't expect to read the three slides on the right, but again, these are some of the caps that you've seen before. So this is the bond summary of two hundred million one fifty-five. Of that, Connet Elementary has eighteen point eight million dollars. And it's actually split between Series One and Series Two. So as we know, Series One was sold last year for roughly ninety-four million dollars. There's a component of that secondary construction, which is part of Series Two, which would be in twenty-three. Eastover, about seven point two million dollars. Those program costs are all in Series Two. So that's again why we're here tonight, is just to confirm the Connet aspect of pre-K going forward. So what we heard from French Associates, who is the district's architect, there was some concerns from the initial design. From FFLA presentation in May, they actually had five different areas of construction. So they actually had the gymnasium that was going to potentially be where the early education center is now. They're going to put on some special education classrooms. They're going to do some, the kindergarten classrooms and the secured vestibule. We've been able to actually work with the district's facilities team, working with the principal and administrators, as well as the design team. We've actually been able to reduce those five areas down to three. So I just want to kind of walk you through these areas themselves. So you have here the secured entry. So again, just similar, every single school and the district will have a secured vestibule. These are the five kindergarten classrooms that are being constructed. The gym was originally going to be located right here, and you'll see on the site plan of why it makes more sense to be back here. But again, it's going to be its own independent cafeteria, storage, and toilet rooms. Here you have the three existing early childhood centers. We're actually going to construct seven more for a total of ten. And that's important because if you look at fifteen to twenty kids, that's going to be able to accommodate the roughly one hundred and seventy students that are currently at both Lone Pine and at Connet. So again, maybe even expand a little bit to that capacity by having ten total classrooms at Connet going forward. The other thing we heard was, again, how do you create that separate playground? So again, with the early childhood center, they have an outdoor playground here. From a cafeteria aspect, you've got the upper elementary, lower elementary playgrounds. Obviously, you have kindergarten playgrounds. We're able to repurpose the existing gymnasium into three special education centers, along with a gross motor skill, which you have highlighted in blue. And then also the STEM lab and the media center. So again, renovating these spaces to really create that consistency across all the districts. We also heard about access onto the site. So having passed on court during bell times, we've actually come up with a secondary entrance. And then from administrative time is looking at the K-five and early childhood bell start. So the concerns that were kind of brought up by French, I think we've been able to address all those four concerns with this solution going forward. Over at Eastover, again, when the K-five programs are being consolidated to the East Hills, this really renovates the secured office and vestibules. This actually gives you a total of twenty-six total classrooms. So if you look at Fox Hills, which by the way, my two nieces are there, my nephew's coming up through the ranks, which is great. We're actually going from fifteen classrooms up to twenty-six total classrooms for Eastover Early Childhood Center. So again, a capacity for additional growth in that area. So at the end of the day, again, Ms. Wills, why are we here today? We are going to come back to the board. Kind of, you take a funneling process from scope, design, to the bond programming, to the actual detailed drawings. We're going to be coming back to the board in November timeframe to give you an update on the design development estimate, or the DDS estimate. So we did that during the middle school processes to allow you to kind of look at the scope documents. Again, how does that tie into the long-term goals and objectives of the district for middle school? We're going to do the same thing here at the elementary schools with Connet and Way Classroom additions and multipurpose room. Ultimately, we're going to go out for bids in that December timeframe. And just like we did for the middle schools, you're going to be seeing a lot of us in that March, April, May timeframe as we start to roll out these timeframes. So that's why it was important for us tonight to really give an update to the board, kind of as a follow-up and a recap from the FFLA meeting back in May. And at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to the board administration for any questions.
Anybody?
Paul, as we look at the Connet relayout, where we moved the gym to the back of the facility and added more pre-K rooms in the front, do we have an estimate of the impact on our budget for that relayout?
Well, actually, the good news is the general conditions in terms of having temporary fencing, like you're kind of seeing at BHMS, is creating a more efficient construction. The square footage actually is exactly the same. So again, not having the two or three elementary classrooms that would be for special ed, those are being renovated with the existing. So you can imagine taking a gymnasium and making a classroom space. That's actually part of that design development estimate. So trustee Kumar, that's a great question, because we'd want to be able to show you, here's kind of the eighteen point eight million, here's the preschool addition, here's the gymnasium, and here's the different scoping for that. And again, that's going to be some time in that November board timeframe. So, great question.
So I guess one of the questions is, so what's the anticipation? Are we starting to look at a traffic study in terms of what the impact is?
Yeah, so again, that would be the next step, is the additional due diligence. Now that we kind of have this laid out over the next several months, is understanding, is it a right turn only into there and a left turn only out? Again, that'd be the next step, working with the civil engineer to do that traffic study for that. So that'd be just some of the additional databases. Obviously, you're not looking at a traffic light on court. I don't think there's the quantity of cars like we had at the high school back when the high school was being constructed. So again, that'd be the secondary piece of due diligence.
So we're going to do the traffic study and then make a determination? Because that, I mean, if the traffic study says, you know, things would be backed up significantly, you know, then that would be something that we'd have to consider. Like something similar to like what's going on in the high school right now.
Yeah, so right now, only having one drive, the traffic study is going to tell us the betterment of it, and then they're going to have the recommendations of potentially the changing of lanes. So is it a one-way and one-way out, like you see with some other districts? How does the traffic flow with buses and parking lots like that? So that'll be that, more of that access onto the site and the striping piece. But that'll be some good information to have on our hands. I think also, I forgot to mention, there's also a deceleration lane. I'm kind of taking it right into the Connet site, which is not shown here on the preliminaries. But again, that'll be part of that design development update. So trustee Howard?
Last week, the superintendent was very kind to offer your services to allow us to give a little pre-exposure to this material. I seem to remember you said something about that there was going to be some further study on preschool going to the future. Could you elaborate on that?
Sure. So I know the board has a kind of initiative to take a look at a long-term capital plan or strategic plan for the district. So again, we know that we've got a bond of two hundred million, which we think from a preschool perspective, right now, if someone says, what if preschool needs to be expanded? West Hills does have some capacity to take on that aspect of three to six classrooms, if you will. What are you going to do with the nature center? What's going to happen with the farm? So that was our recommendation, as the district's looking at some long-term strategic capital planning, to incorporate, how does preschool, you know, fit into that equation? So again, at the end of the day, we just, I think, some of the slides earlier, there's eleven positions currently open. You know, so again, we really want to start with not necessarily where the preschool would be, but again, how does that tie into the district's long-term goals and objectives? So our recommendation, and we see this with a lot of districts across the state of Fitz, Novi, Troy, Farmington, is how do we handle and address today for the next five, ten years? And then what does that next twenty-year plan, fifty-year plan look like? So what we mentioned, you know, Fox Hills, Lone Pine, Pine Lake, you know? So these are all conversations of twenty-five years ago, if the federal government's funding pre-K, how does that tie into that? So again, I think we talked a couple of years ago about disposition of sites. You should definitely have a west-side presence, definitely have an east-side presence, and center of the district presence in terms of flexibility. So our recommendation would be, again, to take a look at the PK component as part of that capital plan. But again, it's really going to go back to the district's goals and objectives of, is it PK? How's it funded? Can we get the staff? Can we get the students, et cetera? So that was part of that comment of necessarily deeper dive for today, but obviously, as you're looking at that long-term capital plan, is just to consider that. So again, we've done, I think, a half a dozen early childhood centers, either renovating existing facilities, building new. So we have some very good data points of what it would cost, but it really is going to go back to what's the district's goals and objective educationally for pre-K. And then obviously, that form should follow that function, so.
And I'd like to say to our board, I think that's an excellent idea. And, you know, we're working very hard right now on the Series One spending, and that's for the next two years of construction to getting ready for the summer or the fall of two thousand twenty-three. But this whole Series Two elements that Paul is referring to, I mean, we've got about, you know, eight or ten different buildings that we can really need to think about in terms of where do we want those buildings to be ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? And they're all kind of scattered. I mean, you've got the nature center, you have the transportation building, you have preschool. These were not issues really covered in scope and design. And, oh, the STEM center, which we've been talking about for a decade. So I think that we can utilize, and again, this is up to the board and the superintendent. But I see that over the next two years, before we have the series money available to us, that now would be the time to kind of do the analysis of the deep dives of what do we want each one of these facilities? As Mr. Wills was saying, what is our long-range plan for each one of these little areas of our school business? So I think this will be something for a future board meeting that we'd love to discuss.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much, Paul.
Yes, and we'll see you every month for the next several months.
Oh, fine. Okay, great. Next item, summer learning programming success from Learning Services. Todd and friends.
Paul, that was a great way to introduce Mr. Riggs. So here is our friend, Mr. Riggs. And, you know, we are so excited. Probably a theme for talking about summer school is really to talk about an entire group of unsung heroes from over the summer. And it's probably hard to remember because that summer went by very quickly. And we, I think, I'd have to ask Kimberly, but I think we had about three or four days between the legislation being passed, working with the business office, coming up with a plan, and figuring out how to use that funding that was coming out of P.A., Public Act III. You might recall this late last spring, and to build an entire program. The BHEA was incredible to work with in terms of figuring out how we would structure that program. And we had incredible teachers. And Mr. Riggs is here to tell us a little bit about that program. And just quickly, Kimberly, about how many students were in that in-person? Or Mr. Riggs, how many students did we have?
About three twenty-five session one, three fifty-five session.
So about three hundred and fifty kids throughout the summer, either in both of those sessions or in one or the other session. It was an incredible program, very successful. And I'm going to let Mr. Riggs tell us a little bit more about it.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me here. So I think I do know a couple of people up here on the board. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Nicholas Riggs, and I can usually be found in the Directed Studies Department at the Bloomfield Hills High School. But I'm not up here to talk about the usual. I'm up here to talk about a pretty unique opportunity that I had this summer in working with our K-eight students in the Summer Academy at Connet, as well as a couple of the other summer opportunities that were available, which I'm going to share with you right now. So of these summer offerings that we had in the summer of two thousand twenty-one, the two that I am most familiar with and working directly with were the K-eight in-person academy and the K-eight virtual offerings. So I was directly involved in both of those, taking over as interim administrator for the K-eight in-person academy and working with various grade levels there. At that program, as I had just mentioned, we had about three hundred and twenty-five students in the first four weeks of the session and three hundred and fifty-five students in the second four weeks of the session. That ran three days a week for about two and a half hours per day. And we offered a variety of things that I'm going to be talking about in just a minute. In addition, I worked with the virtual programs, excuse me, with the virtual programs. In fact, teaching one of the virtual classes and working with some of the virtual teachers to offer programs. In fact, to some of the same students who chose to take both of those enrichment opportunities that we offered. But now on to a little bit of the fun stuff. So I did provide a few pictures of some of the things that went on at the in-person academy. So we did have hands-on activities, and you'll see here some hands-on activities from Ms. West's kindergarten class, Mr. Strager's seventh-grade math class that was going on, a personal favorite that I heard from many students and from many parents, Mr. Masucci's reading activities, and Mr. Honkey's gym activities, which occurred for various groups throughout the week. In addition to that, we had group activities that happened. This is some of the group study that was going on in Ms. West, or in Ms. Andrews' class, Ms. Perry's kindergarten class doing a hands-on activity, and Ms. Pittman's fourth-grade class doing an activity. I just wanted to share that with you quickly because it'll make a little more sense when I go into the next part, which is what I want you to take away from this, if you take anything away from the brief time that I'm with you tonight. This program was a success because we had staff that took incredible care of the students. They worked with the students each day with engaging material and interesting material, and students were happy to be in this program. That's a tough act to come up with in the summer when most people are relaxing and traveling and spending time with their family. But it was something that I heard over and over from parents when I was able to see them each day. So I can't stress to you enough how important that was and why it was such a big part of the success that we had. The way that Summer Academy was structured, we had dedicated times each day for reading and writing, dedicated times for math, and dedicated times for social and physical activity. We were able to do all that safely throughout the majority of the summer and basically allow students to meet in person and be safe and complete these activities. Most importantly, and what I heard over and over from parents was, for many of the students that we had, this was their first ability to come back in person consistently and be with their peers on a daily basis. They were tremendously appreciative of that, and I think it's a big part of why they were coming back day after day with a smile on their face. We heard overwhelmingly positive things from parents, the emails I received. And part of my duties at pickup and drop-off, I was able to chat with them every day. And it was something that I heard over and over again. To me, the real value that we had here, more so than doing the enrichment, was we were able to, after a tumultuous year, reestablish some really important routines with students and get them ready to come back in the fall for the offerings that we have here in the fall. And it is my hope in knowing that, that we're able to kind of continue this program and continue to offer these types of things to students because it really was a great thing to be a part of. And in saying that, I said I wouldn't take up too much time. I don't know if Todd or Kimberly wanted to talk a little bit about what the plans are going forward?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Riggs. And before I mention a couple of things as we look out to next summer, I really want to touch back on a point that Mr. Riggs talked about. I remember standing in the hallway with him whilst the summer program was going on. And, you know, we had really programmed for an academic experience for our children to be engaged in throughout the summer. And as we looked around, it was obvious. We had a good percentage of that student population who had not been in a physical classroom with other children since March of two thousand twenty. And a lot of time had passed. And I remember looking at Mr. Riggs going, this is what this is actually about. That if we were going to almost prescribe, you know, create a prescription that what we're going to do to recover from having that lack of social interactions is what we're going to do is three times a week for a couple hours, have you with other students in a classroom. And that was probably the best benefit from that, as well as students being engaged and learning throughout the summer in a structured environment and an academic setting. So it was, that was absolutely incredible. With that success, we don't imagine that this program simply fades away. It is true that the funding source for P.A. III has disappeared on us. However, it's very likely that parents might look for programs such as this, perhaps under like some type of recreation-type experience. So we're going to be working with the BHEA in terms of how could we restructure it? We probably would have never have built this to be eight weeks long, but that was the requirement of Public Act III. So we might shorten that up a little bit, work with the BHEA again in terms of how we might staff there. So I think you could expect to see, maybe in the next couple of months, we'll have that sorted out well ahead of time for next year. And then we'll also work with the business office in terms of what would the structure be in terms of any type of enrollment or tuition, or how we might go about doing that. And it's still unforeseen whether or not there may be legislation as we move into next spring that would suddenly come along and, you know, incentivize doing the same type of situation. If that's, if that ends up being available, we'll already have a program ready to go, and we would try to capture those funds and then offset any costs that a family would have. So that's a little bit in terms of what we experienced last year. It was an incredible program. Mr. Riggs did a wonderful job jumping in. We really appreciated his leadership. And like he said, it was a lot of great work next summer, and we could expect to see that again in parents. As soon as we have that information out, maybe around wintertime, we'll start advertising what that is going to look like.
Todd, was this open to non-district students, this summer program?
We were unable to do that with Public Act III because you had to be enrolled in the district during that school. the district during that school year to be eligible. But that was only for the in-person learning. So our non-PA 3 summer school experiences, like the virtual learning, I do think we did have some students out of district that enrolled in that. And then we had a fee for that. Now, if it's not under Public Act 3, and that is not a requirement, then that is something that we might be able to, to look at. But it was really, Jennifer, it was really simply just because it was a requirement of PA 3 that they had to be enrolled in your school district during the school year. It did not matter if they were enrolling and were going to be in your district in September. They had to be there at the end of the school year.
And I ask that because I'm just thinking of lowering variables here. Have you thought about maybe studying the scores going forward this year of the kids who were in school versus maybe some kids who are not, just to see if there, there might be anything there?
That's always something that we're considering. And in fact, we did make an assessment process part of that experience, and we were able to capture some of that data so that we would be able to look at that, and then also be able to share that at the school buildings for the children that did participate. Again, probably the greatest success there, you know, socializing your children is extremely important in elementary school. And not having that, I mean, we have, we had children that were at home by themselves for quite some time, and that probably was the greatest benefit. And then the way that we provided that social experience to socialize our children was through an academic setting in which we were primarily focused on literacy and mathematics during that. So, yep.
So from what I'm understanding, we have not had this kind of a program prior to the summer through PA 3?
Not this type of in-person. There's been other different type of experiences over the summer, but not like a summer school experience that you could, you would be able to go to. And so PA 3 freed up the funding in order for us to be able to do that.
So it sounds like the whole program, all the curriculum, was all developed in the spring to do this program from absolutely nothing. So it sounds, so congratulations and props to you for putting something together out of, you know, that didn't exist prior, previously.
It was a mad rush, for sure. And luckily, though, we had templates and frameworks from our hybrid learning.
Okay.
And we relied on our teachers. I mean, it was, it ended up being an extension of the current school year.
Mm-hmm.
So second graders continued to go through because, you know, our, you know, our school year was really disrupted. It was fragmented. You know, sometimes we were virtual and hybrid, and then we were fully in-person. And so we were able to go back through and kind of comb back into some of those areas to make sure that, okay, that second grader is ready for third grade. That's really what the focus would be. Since this year is not feeling like that, we would probably increase the academic extension in there and perhaps be a little bit less about going back, if you're a second grader, going back through second grade, and make it more of a bridge between second and third grade, or wherever that child is coming into that some experience. But, yeah.
I wanted to add, I'm sorry, just to your question. So Kimberly and Todd were both very helpful in helping our teachers get set up in a short amount of time with some of the resources that we already had, as well as the fact that we had very talented teachers that came with a lot of their own materials and were ready and excited to get some.
How many teachers did you, did the program?
I believe we had 18 in the first session and 14 in the second session.
Let me just have one quick follow-up. So you were saying that this is all dependent upon the PA 3 funding, or has been. Can you tell us if by chance the, because either we can advocate for PA 3 continued into 2022, but if that doesn't work through our legislature, can you give us an idea of how much additional funds you got from PA 3? So if we did want to self-fund this, what kind of money we'd be talking about?
Yeah, I'm going to end up giving you a number per student. Tina might have, off the top of her head, like a total?
Just a round number, just trying to get an approximation. Sure, because if this is something that LST would like to do, and we need to do it out of general funds, we would need to figure out how we prioritize that.
My recommendation right now would be not to look at the general fund. The general fund and the way we get funded right now is for during the school year. So any type of extension that falls into the summer would pull away from the funding that we're trying to spend during the school year. But we think by going from eight weeks, Howard, and shoring that up to maybe about five weeks, it also would decrease the expenses around that, yet providing a good five-week, five weeks of academics. And then, of course, what we do in any type of situation like this, if a student is on free and reduced lunch, we still look for opportunities to eliminate that as even being a barrier, yet perhaps have some type of tuition fee attached to that. But we're already trying to make some of those measures to squeeze that up a little bit, to shore up the costs.
Because tuition, obviously, is an option, but then equity, we want to make sure that there's a, an equity component to it.
And then it doesn't create the situation where we're, where we're trying to find budgetary dollars available for during the school year to provide that outside of the school year. So I think we'll be able to find, find a good balance in that.
Trusty Baron, this is common nationally. So we've looked at some additional programs, and we want to make sure we provide the opportunity to have an opportunity. So not every student may want to have that academic extension, but for community members, for our parents who do want that for their child, we want to continue to offer it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs, for stepping up. Appreciate it.
Okay, item 7C, data and student outcomes. Update on Spring 2021 state testing results. Carrie Cracker, Bloomfield Virtual Administrator and District Assessment Coordinator and Data Specialist.
Good evening, Board of Education. So I'm here tonight to share with you some of our state assessment data from the spring, and especially now that the embargo has been lifted. So here's what we're able to gather so far for your knowledge and awareness. So one thing I want to share, just for your awareness, is just about approximately how long it takes to take an assessment. And you'll see from this particular slide that any given assessment is no more than a couple hours to a half a day. We do know that some of our students that really want to be careful and take their time, take a little bit longer, but that, this is the approximation of how long it takes to take each test. This particular slide just is also for awareness. This breaks down exactly for each grade level what tests are required and expected of our students. And as we look at K-2, just a quick reminder, and down through all of our grades, K-8, our benchmark assessment is FastBridge. And this year, we will also be administering FastBridge to our ninth-grade students for literacy and math. But these are the state-required assessments. So on the upcoming slides, what you will see is some of our state assessment results, along with our Bloomfield Hills results. So this particular slide, this is the state of Michigan, and so this is statewide. These are assessments, assessment results that were shared by Dr. Rice. And what you'll notice on this particular one, what Dr. Rice has noted is that the percentages of eighth and 11th grade students who scored proficient or above this year on ELA with regard to PSAT and SAT tests is, has improved over 2019, while the percentages of students who scored proficient and/or above in ELA, Math and Social Studies, and other grades declined a little bit. Dr. Rice noted that precise comparisons to any previous year's scores would be difficult. Students did not take the M-Step or other state assessments in the year 2020. They were waived. The percentages of students who took ELA and Math M-Steps, M-Step tests ranged in the spring of 2021 across the state from about 64% to 72% of our students testing. The 2020-21 school year was very uneven, with definitely high health risks for many of our students and staff. This is from Dr. Rice. Inconsistent technology across the state and variations in teaching and learning across the state. Any analysis of M-Step results must factor in the low participation rates in state testing. And so these are the comments from Dr. Rice about the statewide results that I wanted to share. We are now going to take a look at some of our BHS results. And similarly to the way the state results are reported, we put together a table that shows our 2019, which was the last time our students took state assessments, to this past spring in 2021. You'll note that in BHS, our third, fourth, and fifth-grade students who scored proficient in ELA are up, or have increased since 2019. Students who scored proficient increased or stayed the same for the most part in those lower grades. Note that eighth grade takes PSAT, so does not the M-Step in ELA. And that in the SAT, the ELA students who scored proficient 11th grade, in 11th grade is up comparatively, and math went down a little bit. When we take a look at our social studies results, that's M-Step, it stayed the same, whereas our SAT scores have increased. Carrie, I wanted to mention, too, that when we look at the, when Dr. Rice talked about the percentages of students across the state that took the assessments, when we look to Bloomfield Hills, in the elementary schools, we had approximately 90% of our students take the assessment, whether they were in-person. We also offered this to our Bloomfield Virtual students if they would like to come in and test. And so we had close to 90% of our students test in the elementaries. And then as we look towards high school, we had about 75% of our students take the assessment. I want you to keep in mind, too, that when we look from 2019 to 20, spring of 2021, that those third graders who took the tests in 2019 are, were fifth graders in 2021. So you can see how they did in 2019 as third graders, and then if you go down two rows and across, you can see how they did in 2021. So for some grades, amidst this pandemic, we can see how kids did two years later. As I continue to share results this evening, as I have plenty to share, I do want to thank at this time as well, our Technology Department, specifically for helping to make sure we had devices ready across the district to provide a safe environment for students to test, and social distance, and bring them in safely. And I want to thank our communications team for sharing the information with families so they could make an informed decision about testing.
Carrie, can you just say why the science is NA?
There were no results available at this time. They were starred out, which means the state could be doing something with finalizing those at this time.
Okay, so it's not as if we have enough, we don't have enough data. It's just that data, data has not been released by the state yet.
Correct.
Even though this, Dr. Rice released data for the state in total, but not down to the district?
Correct.
Got it.
What you see here is our M-Step results for third through seventh grade in ELA and math. We know that the state has set a proficiency target of 60% for ELA and 47.55% for math. And that go, that target goes through 2024, 25 school year. Our BHS students are above the county and state averages across the board, and that includes social studies as well. Obviously, those school index targets were set back in 2016, and again, they remain constant through 2024, 25. As we look to our, how we're doing for the years 2017, the last four years of testing, we can see how each grade did in ELA and math. And then as we look at eighth grade for 2019 and 2021, that's when that particular grade level switched to the PSAT. But you can see over time how we've done over the last four years with the M-Step and the PSAT 8 results. When we look at this, we see third, fourth, and fifth grade ELA show that students were above the previous three years of testing. Sixth grade is comparable to previous years in ELA, and eighth grade is above, just above the 27, 18 years, and just below what we were at 2019 with 84% proficient. Third and fourth grade math show that the number of students proficient is slightly above the last three years of data. Fifth grade is comparable with previous years. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are down slightly from, from 2019, but students performed above or close to normal compared to previous years. And again, this is all in the midst of a pandemic. This next particular graph shows you our trend again over time. When we look at third grade for just ELA, for example, that first bar is 2017, the next bar is 2018, that third bar is 2019, and that last bar is 2021. What this is showing you is similarly to that last graph, but what's added in here are the, how we did compared to the state and the county at each grade level with regard to ELA. Previously, Dr. Kiesler, who was at Oakland Schools, again, mentions that year-to-year comparisons of state assessment results can be problematic because we know that the assessment system changes and our students grow as they take these assessments. Just a quick reminder that when you look at this, the county is in the red line, and our state is represented in the yellow line. And clearly, we are above, again, both the state and the county averages for all of those years.
So although we are above in eighth grade, the state and county had an increase?
Yeah, and that was, so when you look at eighth grade, you'll also notice that 17 and 18 seem slightly lower compared to 2019 and 2021. That's because that's when the state switched from M-Step to PSAT. So 2019 was the first year that the PSAT was given.
So that's why on the previous chart, we were also down in eighth grade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you saying that Dr. Kiesler is now at Oakland Schools?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it was from a previous message, so it was just a reminder of that previous message.
It used to be at MDE, but it's since left.
No, I know that one is there, yeah. These are the math results. So again, very similarly, you're seeing all four years of data and the trends over time and how we've compared to the state and the county averages in mathematics. And again, that reminder, when we look at eighth grade again, the first bar is 2017, the second bar is 2018, that was M-Step, and then 2019 was the first year of SAT, and that, and then 2021. I wanted you to be able to see how we've been doing compared to the state and county trends. So this next one is our 2021 comparison to nearby school districts in Oakland County. And these are the averages of like our, what would our district average be for M-Step for third through seventh grade? So the scores are combined. And you can see how we are doing, how Bloomfield ranks next to these nearby districts, along with the Oakland County average. You can see that in ELA, we are just behind the Troy School District, and that with mathematics, we are just behind Troy and Novi with our results. Again, we are still well above the county average, but you kind of see how we fit within our nearby districts, that we tend to be very comparable to as far as our scores that we're always looking at. So you'll notice I highlighted us in red. The next thing that you'll see is our disaggregated data for M-Step by groups. So first up, we have ELA. And so we know that in the past year, as we've been looking at data, we took our previous three years M-Step and averaged that to get a baseline of where our students were at and where they were typically ranging for 2017, 18, and 19. And so that blue bar is actually our average of the three years for our groups. And those groups are named by MDE. That's the way they are reported out in MySchoolData and other reporting systems. Again, that reminder that MDE has set that 60% target for all of our groups for ELA. And then the red bar is how we did in 2021. The Hispanic group in particular, you have to have 30 students to make a group to report out data on for accountability. And so for the Hispanic group, that means that for 2021, we did not have enough students to make a group to report out on. There is no data available. But you can see for all of our other groups. So you will notice that we have the three-year baseline data compared to 2021. We know that the Asian group remained relatively the same here. There's unavailable data, as I mentioned, for the Hispanic group. The data shows that there were increases in the percent of students proficient in the economic The data shows that there were increases in the percent of students proficient in the economically disadvantaged, which is the ED, our English language learners, while there were some slight declines for our African-American students and students with disabilities. Our goal is to continue to increase to meet the state index target of 60% for ELA. And the comparison of our disaggregated data to Oakland County, to have the actual Oakland County data, which you may have seen in previous years, is not available at this time. I have reached out to our data people there, and they are still making a decision about whether they're going to pull that or not. So when looking at all groups, we are above the state expectation of 60%.
Do we know if, for, for these populations of students, if this is somewhat similar to how they are performing in the classroom? So for instance, our African-American population, it seems that their number is extremely low, and their average is even lower. What do we know about that group's performance in, in previous years? And is this similar to what their performance is in the classroom?
So I think we'd have to gather more data. Last year when we took FastBridge, the, we had the overall percentage, and we know that in literacy and math, our kids were scoring, we had 80% of our students that were at the benchmark in ELA and math are close to it. We were not able to break down our disaggregated data. That was something that FastBridge was still working on so that we could have that disaggregated data and trying to make a technology fix. And so we're still waiting on that as of this moment. In the classroom, we have our Fanta-Simpanel data. And we would say that children are showing us in the classroom that they're actually doing better on that than they are on some of our state assessments.
Speak into the mic.
Is there a reason why we don't have the Hispanic data for 2021?
Yeah, so what I mentioned earlier is that you have to have 30 students to make up a group to report out data on for accountability. There is no data available for the Hispanic group because we did not have 30 or more students to report out on. So there's no data available at this time. This is the same version. This is our mathematics. So you'll note with regard to our disaggregated data for math, it shows the average of where kids were, what our baseline was for 17, 18, and 19, and how that compares to how we performed in the spring of 2021. We can see that the Asian group shows a little bit of a decline, as well as students with disabilities and our African-American students. While the data does show that there are increases with our economically disadvantaged group and our English language learners. And some of our other groups are all in white, remained relatively the same. Again, with Hispanic, there is not enough students to report out scores on. Groups need at least 30 students to report out on data. Again, our goal here with math is to continue to increase to meet the state index target of at least 47.55% for math. As we can see, the average for all students is well above the index target of 47.55%.
I guess I would have the same question for, for the math, for our African-American students. Are they faring well on the other exit test in classroom performance?
So for FastBridge, we do not have the disaggregated data from last year. It's not available to us. If we were to look back at our previous NWEA system, again, I would say on that particular assessment, our students performed close to where they're performing on state assessments. It was, it's a predictor of how kids might perform on a state assessment. But I would say that they are slightly higher than what we're showing here.
Which is still lower than the percentage of the state, correct?
So they're different assessments. You know, the NWA was based on a RIT score that put kids in percentiles of approximately where they would be and fit into a grade level, and it's a different type of assessment. Whereas this, you know, the state assessment is a completely different type of test.
So for, but for M-Step, are African-American students performing below the, the state average? And also for math as well as ELA?
ELA, correct.
How, about how many years or how long a cycle before we start seeing whether there's a positive effect from the math equity challenge?
So that's where our district improvement work comes in, our national equity project work, formative assessment practices that we're working on, new math curriculums that we've implemented with Envision Math and Big Ideas. It takes a couple of years to start seeing the impacts of those changes in the data set.
Just follow up on Michelle's question. Are, are the African-American population, are they forming below the, what is expected or the state average?
We're falling below the state index target of 47.55%.
The state target, not the state average where they are, where like, was like 28?
District is above the state average for that particular disaggregated.
No, I just, I just wanted, you know, I just know that the target is 47, okay.
Yeah.
And I would just expand upon what Michelle said. She was talking about the African-American black category, but also the same thing could be said about economically disadvantaged, ELL, and students with disabilities. All of them are, you know, well below where other students are.
Yep, and our, and with all of our improvement work, our goal is to make improvements and continue to look, continue to look at our data and study it and make changes that will best support our students' needs and where they're at right now. And that's where that formative assessment data that's in the classroom with the teacher, our Fanta-Simpanel running records that we do with students, and, and our disaggregated FastBridge data, as soon as it's available, will help us study that further to make changes so that we're best supporting our students to increase these scores.
I was going to say this later, but as long as we're on this slide, you continually refer back to the MDE targets.
Yes.
We, the district, can have the ability to set our own targets. And as we go work through our strategic plan, that we're going to talk about our mission statement, and then we move into our goal setting for the district, I hope our, my board members will continue to think about how we want to set our own targets for our students that are not doing as well as other students in our district.
It's actually a really important process, and those targets have been set, and they've been in some of the weekly updates. So you'll be able to look at what those targets are. And then as early as October 29th, on our professional development day, we'll be doing almost like a data discovery at the building level. And so the type of questions that you're kind of putting out there, those are the type of questions and prompts that we'll be engaging in at the building level with a classroom set of data. But we still want a few more data pieces to become available for our teachers. So we'll have M-Step, and then we'll have FastBridge, then we'll have Fanta-Simpanel data by then, because we're still in this beginning stage of the school year where we are still collecting different forms of assessments. So this is one of those assessments from last spring. But typically, what even helps us move our instruction along even a little bit more of an, a nimble fashion is the data that we're collecting right now on students. So this is a good measure of, when we take a look at all those fall assessments and we start carving out goals, this will tell us how we did after that whole entire cycle when they do this again. So this snapshot right now at the end of last school year is, is almost more of a reflection on, okay, how did that school year just go? As opposed to what is a predictor for this? So that's a little bit what's tough, Howard, about state assessment data, is by the time you get it back, the students are moved into another grade, and they have another teacher, and they're configured differently. But we have, and I heard Carrie starting to go through our assessment schedule. And we'll have that data along with this data, and then we'll start triangulating that at the building level, and then start carving out what is our intervention model. But as we look at this, this is what our data is suggesting right now. We're not, what we haven't seen are large fluctuations. Imagine, go back a year ago today. Remember, our goals were we were going to sustain our footing in math and ELA, and that we weren't going to let the global pandemic really slide us back to where we would be looking at, it was a significant impact on a large scale, because then we would have to start talking about how do we reallocate resources? How do we start moving people around? And so what this is suggesting is that our intervention model that's in place right now, that, that that should be able to sustain and support the type of improvements that we're going to be looking, looking for. And then what we have scheduled, which is a little bit different than what we've done the last couple of years, is through the MyKIP schedule and having those monthly check-ins, which the first building is going to be next month, right?
Yeah, that's going to be West Hill.
So West, so you're going to hear from each building, almost to like a building level of the answers to those questions. Well, what are we noticing? What are we seeing? What are some of the things that we could tailor? What could we do a little bit differently? And so at West Hill's Middle School, we'll be talking about reading recovery a little bit less because that's a middle school. But when an elementary is here, they'll be talking about how does a BIT team come together, identify those students that are in need of intervention, how we're stacking those components. So there will be different forms as, as we move along through that MyKIP process to be able to take these data sets and look at those questions of, on a large scale. Now, specific for the math equity challenge.
Excuse me, Todd. Can I reclaim my time? So thank you so much.
I was not taking your time away from you. I was, I was continuing on with the presentation.
Well, no, I, I had wanted to continue my question or my statement. So the targets you've got here are MDE targets. And Todd said earlier in his little description there, that those targets have already been set for Bloomfield. I would say that the team of eight really has not set those targets. That really is up to the team of eight working through our strategic plan and our goal setting of this.
I think that's a conversation for the fourth, but under the direction of BIC in the chair, we've set those targets. And we've had them in the board update. That's a great conversation. I don't think Carrie would be able to speak to that. But as a board, you could decide whether or not you wanted to go through those again and reset those, or we could continue on with the work that we did last spring.
The board did not set them.
We did meet as a committee.
The, the committee done, but the committee has no authority. Only the board has the authority, as we know with the majority, with four people and above. Only the board can do that. So that's something we can, so that's something we can do as we go forward in here, our strategic plan.
It was presented.
It was presented but never approved. We have never actually.
Howard.
Can we please move on?
Carrie is in the middle of her presentation.
I understand that.
Just as a point of clarity, there isn't a board procedural outline that mandates that as a board, you need to vote on a goal. So at any point, a principal, a teacher, an assistant superintendent, Carrie, Pat, anyone can write on a piece of paper that this is a goal and this is a target that we're going to chase. It doesn't take a procedural action by the Board of Education to carve out school improvement goals.
But, well, we can have that discussion later, my friend.
That's a different time. Can I ask a question? To, to Michelle's earlier question about grades, I've often wondered, you know, because this, this kind of data is, you know, more, less, fewer variables, right? But, but we all know that we worry about standardized testing as a, you know, is it, how accurate of a snapshot is it, right? So is there, and I, I wondered this when COVID came, is there a way, an objective way that grades can help us, knowing that, you know, every teacher may grade a little differently or have different rubrics for how much, you know, this counts to your grade versus that versus that? Is, is it helpful for, for the meta-analysis?
Well, I think it is. It's another data point, right, to show us kind of how our kids are doing, especially in secondary. So it is something we look at, like how are kids doing overall? How many students need credit recovery? And so that is part of the data process at secondary in particular. So it is helpful information to us just to kind of look at the health of our high school kids and what might need to be in place. I mean, from that little data study last year that we did at the high school, we were then able to offer summer courses that might best meet the needs of students so that they could earn a different grade or get credit recovery or learn because they needed summary teaching. So it's definitely a worthy data point to consider as we look at our students.
My question is, when it comes to these M-Step tests or any other testing, and get the data back, is there question-specific data as to where specific students are, are falling behind their proficiency? Because the numbers, I mean, that you see from the state on the state website provide you with no information really as to why a student is in proficient. And I think that's, if you're not getting that information, then Howard can go to the state and do all his work and get us that information so that we can actually use these tests for something, you know? So I don't know. I don't know if you get more information than, than it's available at this, you know, on the state website, but it would seem that we need more information than just the percentage of students that are proficient.
Yeah. So I, what I can share, and then I'll turn it over to Pat if you want to respond as well. When we used to have our former Meet before M-Step, it used to not necessarily break it down by student, but it used to give us the percentage of kids that got the question right, and the percentage that didn't, and what they might have guessed. And you could take the standard and break down where you might need to shore up things. With M-Step, it doesn't do that necessarily. They've just started designing reports in the last couple of years where it will give you sort of a topic area where kids, it'll say it's like a group of students or a particular grade level where they may have struggled with a concept. Let's say, for example, in third grade, they, they asked some questions around plants in particular, or the plants in the environment. So we kind of know a general topic where kids may have had a weakness that we could take a look at and then see what we're doing in our curriculum to see if there's something we could do better with plants. The dilemma is we don't know the question that was asked on the task, or how it was asked, or the context of the question. We just have to sort of generalize it to like how that might apply to our curriculum or how our students are doing. And then they also show like particular topics where your group of students had an area of strength. So principals and grade level teams can then use those reports and then compare it to some of our FastBridge data or what they're seeing in the classroom so that we can look at all of our data together and see, is it really something, or do we feel like we're teaching it well in our pre and post-assessments on plants, or the kids are doing well? We have to figure out, okay, well, is it the testing situation? And look, and the stamina through a piece of text. And so, so it's our job to sort of take the information that we can glean and analyze it to best support our students, whether it's small group instruction or curriculum or shoring up something. But they don't give us the specific question and question type to break down.
See it. You don't have the test.
Right.
Oh, that's not helpful.
Like they used to. So we can, we can generalize some information from the assessment. I think Pat was going next.
I think one thing we have to be cognizant of is sometimes we, we get fixated on one data point, right? So as someone that taught in the classroom almost 20 years, I would give a summative assessment. Now, we do an item, item analysis at that. And then I could see where my students fell a little short based on the standards that were required of that unit for me to teach, and go back and reteach if I had to. We're trying to build a full data profile of all our students. So a little bit of MSEP, a little bit of FMP, a little bit of FastBridge. We're going to talk about SAT, which ties and correlates into what? College admission. Where do we put this data point? In 2019, the freshman class at the University of Michigan, over 10% of all incoming students came from one of two high schools in the United States of America. This includes Bloomfield Hills High School and IA. We hold two of those 10 spots. Where, where does that fall into a data point? Right? When we look at MyKIP, we're also looking at the social emotional wellbeing. We haven't talked about that in, in quite some time, and that will be part of what we're doing with Panorama. So a lot of times, and I'm guilty of this, you see one square like, great, we're, we're doing, but we, we've got to build that big picture. And so as we work together in our, our committee of the whole or our study sessions, we need to build that whole picture and put together a full data profile and not fall in love with the one thing that's so great, and then see a ranking that says, oh, we're ranked this. Oh, my gosh, the sky is falling, the sky is falling.
The sky was falling earlier.
What, what is, what is the category that it goes into? And there, where are we really not meeting our goals? Whether it's with our African-American students, our economically disadvantaged students, which we've talked about, and John, you were part of that meeting as well, and how we move forward and make sure we're providing education we need for all of our students. So for you, just keep in mind, we're trying to build a whole picture from so many data points.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree, but I think we need the community to hear that we're, that there's action being taken when we're showing data with such low numbers, right?
Agreed.
And so I'm just trying to make sure that we give them a chance to hear that there is action being taken toward, you know, toward helping to move that needle for those populations of students that we consistently see on the lower end of the percentage scales, right? And so this is a great opportunity for them to hear that we aren't just sitting around tooling our thumbs, that we're doing more than just looking at data, that there's actually action being taken.
I mean, the math equity challenge is a great example, and our focus on that as well, because that was identified as a need to raise all of our achievement in math. And kudos to, to all of our teachers and the LSE, LST team and our building principals. Last year, when the focus was on ELA and math, we had those two focal areas so that we didn't have that huge slide.
Yeah, it's hard to give the daily conversation.
And, and Pat's right on, on many points there. And one specifically is that summative aspect of the M-Step. And I, like I'm hearing, John, you say like, we really want the diagnostic. Our internal assessments do more of that diagnostic. So when we do the, like, that's where we can look for, where we, where you can widen. So when we do the, like, that's where we can look for, where you can widen out all of the skills that you're really trying to foster and help a child acquire, where this is more of like that summative broad reach. But on that internal data, we'll be able to get more of that diagnostic information. And it is really difficult for people to, you know, we don't have a very good mechanism in terms of communicating all the efforts that are always ongoing with school improvement. And there, you know, to pour through the E C O L, I doubt we get a lot of traffic in that report or in some of those annual reporting mechanisms. So that's what will help us if somebody's really dialed in to get school improvement information or to learn some of those strategies through a board meeting. By spacing out those MyKit meetings and having those regular intervals, we'll be able to surface that if that's more of an effective medium to kind of really get that information out there.
Senator President?
Yes.
Yeah. So, this whole process is like a year-long process. First, you set targets. This is where we want to end up. Then you go through the MyKit process, what the strategies are to achieve those. What we're seeing here is just the end result. It's the answer at the end. This is, you know, this is just a data dump of this is where we are. Where the meat is, is where do we want to end up? How do we get there? And then this tells us, did we reach those targets or not? And if we didn't reach the, if we did reach targets, attaboy, we break, set a higher target. And if we didn't, then we start asking questions why. But one of the things we need in these charts, as we go forward, as I said, through the strategic plan, is setting those internal targets so that we know where we want to be so that as if on a speedometer, you say where you want to be. You want to be at 70 miles an hour. You might be at 50, well, you want to get to 70.
The discussion, it's, where you're going with the discussion is something that we are working on in the future, but it's not something we need to talk about. Every time this comes up.
But it all links into what we're going to talk about later.
I know, but every time the subject comes up, you say the same things over and over again, and we're getting there, but it's not helping us get there by spending extra time on a Thursday night in the middle of September.
Very good, sir.
Yes, I just want to say, thank you very much. I know a lot of us asked you for the data, broken out by groups, you gave it to us. Broken out by comparable communities, you gave it to us. That was the expectation of the presentation and you gave it to us, and thank you very much.
I'd like to clarify too. I know, I know that you're not finished, but I just want to clarify before we get too much further. I don't think that we're being presented with these as the end result. This is, as Pat just said, one data point, one. That's it.
When I see end result, a snapshot of where we were as of June.
From one source. There's a bunch of other things that put together. And to John's point, this is, really indicates how a group of students are doing. If you want individual progress, this test isn't the one that you look at necessarily. So, different test, different objectives.
And how planning is at committee of the whole from now on. So, that's where we'll attack those things.
Yeah, oh, sorry, one more thing. The weekly updates, what, bi-weekly now, whatever they're now? The targets are set well above what the state targets are. They've been set months ago. So, you know, if you want them above what the state targets are, they're already there.
Well, we as a.
Okay. Another time, I'm sorry, Carrie. Please continue.
I will hold all my questions to the end.
I would just say that our job right now, because, keep in mind, we had multiple formats of learning last year. So for our students to perform at or near where they performed in a normal year is amazing, and that is thanks to all of our staff for really supporting our students with their learning last year. Our job right now, as we're still in this, is to meet the students where they're at as they're coming in right now. And that's what our job is right now, is to collect that fall information and analyze it and best support our students. This particular slide, again, is for your awareness. These are the P S A T and S A T scores, the benchmark scores. So for example, with S A T math, that's the benchmark. If a student gets an S A T score of 530 or higher, that means that they've passed the math. They're in that group of the percent proficient if they're above 530. So as we look at the data, I pulled again our comparison to the county and the state as well. For B H S, I pulled in particular our S A T averages so you could see how we compare in the state, like what our average S A T score was for the evidence-based reading and writing as well as math, and then what the total score was, what our district average was, and how that compares to the state. When you look at this, when you see ELA, the first two bars are P S A T eight, and so what you see is 2019, how we did, and then 2021. And then the next four bars that are in succession are S A T eleven from 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2021. And you can see how we compared with the state trends and the county trends. And then on the other side of that, you see P S A T eight for math for 2019 and 21 because that's what we have data for. Remember, it wasn't given previously, it was M-Step. And then the S A T eleven for mathematics for four years and how we've performed. There was an ask again for comparison data, so this is the P S A T eight, the evidence-based reading and writing. So this is how Bloomfield Hills did in comparison to some nearby Oakland County districts that we are always watching closely. And then you also see how we did in comparison to math. So you can see, we are just behind Novi and Troy for those.
Behind Novi.
And then, again, we are above the county average in both. This again is the second year that we've given the P S A T eight. The next graphic, again, is the S A T eleven. Yeah, we saw P S A T eight on the previous slide, and then this slide is the S A T eleven. And again, this is our comparison data. So, I'm showing you the county average, how Bloomfield Hills did along with six southern nearby school districts. The results show how each district did compared to the county results percent proficient. The percent of students that met or exceeded the subject cut score for the S A T eleven assessments. The evidence-based reading and writing shows that we are close behind Troy and Novi and Birmingham. Again, we are above the county average in both math and evidence-based reading and writing. Our 2019 data, just to reference back to that, I know I don't have it in this slide, but just to reference, we were fourth in the county in evidence-based reading and writing in 2019 and fourth in mathematics as well. I'm sorry, in 2019, we were sixth in the county.
Math is the left side of this table, or English is the left.
Yeah, the evidence-based reading and writing is on the left and mathematics is on the right. Thank you for asking. The only other district ahead of us in previous years was South Lyon.
So, just, sorry, giving you a point about using other data points, the fact that, you know, were the, I think the top or one of the top districts, public school districts in Michigan to send students to the top university in the state, does that, and it doesn't seem to correspond with the S A T scores, does that indicate maybe that they're taking the A C T instead? Or, you know, it sort of seems like there's, I don't know, you would expect the district, since it's half of the admissions criteria, if, you know, any explanation for what the disconnect is?
I, what was the state?
I mean, in the past, they said if you polled the students in 11th grade, a larger percentage did take the A C T. I have no idea, but anecdotal, and it seems to be the preferable test in our district, but I have no idea if that's.
Yeah, the A C T they can take, again, but like, I think the state is sort of moving away from A C T money.
Right. I know they have to take the A C T for the state, but do you think they just go take it because they have to and they are planning to send the A C T so they're really not spending time and energy?
Right. The M M E is required. It requires this particular assessment to get in.
This is their 11th grade, so they could have retaken the test.
Yes, they can retake it.
So they could have taken the test again, we don't, this wouldn't be included. So if a student performed lower, they could still take it a second time and they'll meet you eventually.
Yeah, but I'm thinking, if they know they're going to use their A C T score, sometimes they, A, don't come take it at all, or they come take it because it's a graduation requirement, but they sort of blow it off and they put C down or something. I mean, we, you know, we don't, they don't take it with the fidelity as if it was going to count for the score they're sending. I'm not sure if that's.
So.
I know, I just.
Don't use 11th grade, because they take it over. They take it over.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's just one of the things required for the Michigan merit exam, so. All right, so next up, just for S A T eleven, is the disaggregated data so that you could see that as well. Again, it's the average of where we were, what our baseline was for the three years previously, 17, 18, and 19, and then how we compared in 2021 for all of our disaggregated groups. You will notice that Hispanic and English language learners do not have data because we did not have 30 or more students in those particular groups to report data on, it's unavailable. It does show where we maybe had an increase for all students and our African-American students, as well as economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities, and then a slight dip with our Asian group.
Congratulations.
Just that reminder, though, we are above the county and the state, and we're always trying to reach that 60% target, and we're well above that. And then you have the disaggregated data for math. It shows the average of where students were in the years 17, 18, 19 compared to how we did in 2021. Our Asian group declined a little bit, but we can see that our African-American students are showing an increase as well as our economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities. Again, our goal is to meet that state proficiency target of 47.55% for math, and we are above that for all students. Some other data that I just wanted to share with you because obviously we were impacted by P A 306 this past spring. It was supposed to be enacted in 2019, 20, so this was just a reminder of that, but we didn't have assessments that year. So students weren't impacted, but we were impacted this year by the application of that law. And so I have for you the data from my school data, which shows how Bloomfield Hills did compared to the county. So, they break the scores down into three different categories for our third-grade students in literacy. Students with a score of 0 to 1252 are subject to retention, and we had zero students subject to retention this past year, so we were not impacted by that. Students with a score of 1253 to 1271 are eligible for promotion with some additional support. Approximately 3% of our students were recommended to go on to fourth grade but with some additional intervention and support. And then students with a score of 1272 or higher are just eligible for promotion to fourth grade, and that was 97% of our students. So I wanted you to have a chance to see that because it's another data point to share with you, especially with that law being implemented.
This is great. You said only 3% of our third graders were at a recommendation for support. That's, I think that's pretty significant.
3%.
Sounds pretty significant.
It's approximately 12 to 15 students out of 385.
That's really good. That's goodness. Thank you.
Before, this was something that was always a huge pet peeve of my third-grade flunk law, and when I asked Superintendent Watson if we were going to honor that, he goes, we won't have that, I promise you. And I'm thinking, how are you going to promise that? So, you did, we didn't, we don't have anyone that fell in that category, you just, you kept that promise. If there had been people, students recommended to be retained in third grade, I was really concerned that we were going to, what we were going to do if that occurred. And, you know, just like you said, it won't happen. They're all going to be where they need to, and the numbers back that up. So, I thought, good job. It was a big, a bold claim, but we met it.
Did you say that slide for last to share?
So, just that quick reminder, we know that our state assessment data is important and that we keep an eye on it to help make decisions, starting at kindergarten, but we also know that that's an example of assessment of learning. It's not for learning. And our other assessment data that we use throughout the year, like our fount to simple now to do reading records with the students, our FastBridge, our writing pathways, our unit assessments, classroom observations, projects and products, and some formative assessments are the closest to the student to drive student learning in our district, and we will keep our heads and minds focused on that. We want to look at all data to help our kids.
Thank you for, thank you for this report.
Howard?
Todd, I'd like to really compliment you and your staff for the excellent work that you've done in the, looking at the disaggregated data. I'm looking at the ELA for three through seven, and economically disadvantaged increased by nine points. ELL students increased by 18 points. On math, English language students increased by seven points and economically disadvantaged by three points. On the 11th grade, on E B W R, which is ELA, African-Americans increased by nine points, economically disadvantaged increased by five points, students with disabilities increased by eight points. On math, in 11th grade, African-American, Black increased by 14 points, economically disadvantaged increased by 10 points, students with disabilities increased by eight points. Todd, you should be congratulated. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is what we need to be doing to be able to reach our missions, our mission statement there of equality in academic outcomes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I also want to say, from somebody who's been following these presentations even before I got on the board, this is by far the most comprehensive presentation of data that I've seen, and it was excellent. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you for adhering to, listening to all of our questions.
My fellow board colleagues, I'd like to make a motion to move 8A board business up to next. So, some of the, some of our staff members, since it's getting late, can present now, and then we could, is that okay? I'd like to make a motion.
I second.
Make the motion to move 8A after 7C. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to 8A of board business, adoption of sex education curriculum for grade seven, eight. Angela Konzen, did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
Okay. East Hills Middle School Associate Principal.
Good evening. I'm excited to introduce Angie Konzen, who is our District Administrator for Physical and Health, Physical Education and Health, which of Sex Education is a part of. Angie is an outstanding leader in this department as a former P E teacher herself and health teacher. She has, she is our expert on staff, so here she is.
And thank you. I'm here tonight as our District Sex Education Supervisor. As Sarah said, I oversee our curriculum in the District for Health, and that's a component of it. And we're recommending updated our new curriculum for our seventh and eighth grades. The most recent drive for this change was updated national standards in sex education, and those were released in 2020. However, we realized prior to that release that we needed to update our curriculum, so began the work in the summer of 2019. Myself and our district health educators had researched and found four curriculums to review. We conducted a comprehensive analysis of each one of those curriculums and then decided on one to move forward with. With that one curriculum, we actually pulled specific lessons from that curriculum and then sequenced those lessons and adapted each one of them. So we're reviewing each and every individual lesson. And then that was taken before our Sex Education Advisory Board. The advisory board reviewed and voted on those lessons, and then we progressed to a public posting on the schools and the district websites for review by the community and by law, held two public hearings to gather feedback from the community on the curriculum. And then now, we are here at the board. The proposed curriculum is Rights, Respect, Responsibility. It is commonly called the Three Rs from Advocates for Youth, and it was adapted, like I said, and modified from that curriculum. And it is a curriculum that is trauma-informed. It is, youth voice is a strong component of it. The tenet that it holds to is that it is our, our students' rights to have an honest and inclusive sex education, and it's our responsibility to provide that for all students so that they can be informed and make healthy and safe choices with their bodies. It fully meets all of the national sex education standards and updates, and so the components that were either added or modified from the. Trafficking, identity orientation expression, and then laws and policies specific to harassment and sexting, and technology, advancements in medical technologies for prevention and treatments, but also a heavy component on the impact of technology with relationships is part of the curriculum as well. The feedback from educators, from the Sex Ed Advisory Board, from the public, I tried to capture some of the common themes, and main ones that came through were, it's very straightforward and balanced, very factually based, inclusive of all students, comprehensive. There was comment to language that was being used, long overdue, and the largest component really was the parent component, and that's something that we found with it. Each lesson has a homework extension to spark that conversation with the family, so taking what was learned in the classroom, and then how does this align with our family's values, and to have that discussion with the family. And so that was something that was both appreciated by the community and something that teachers felt was very important to provide. The lessons are sequenced out between 7th and 8th grade, and there are seven lessons in 7th grade, nine in 8th grade, and developing, progressing through there. Like I said, it was adapted from a curriculum, and the lessons were each modified, and so some of the lessons were recommended at a different age level, but we felt for our district's needs and demographics, we chose this alignment. And there's one exception. This year, we are providing, or proposing to provide, all 16 of the lessons in 8th grade, and that's due to COVID last year, for our 8th graders missing instruction in sex education, and so making sure that they get all of the content prior to entering high school. Our 7th graders will get just the 7th grade, and then we'll be on the normal sequence of providing the lessons. But the topics are listed there, the specific lessons are hotlinked in there, and those are, like I said, the lessons that were posted on the websites that are, that are modified. And that's, that's pretty much the gist of it. So questions that you have?
Yeah. On the feedback page, it says, "One of the items is long overdue."
Yes.
Can you tell us when the last time this curriculum was modified, and what the major changes are between the curriculum we taught last year and this new curriculum we're going to be teaching this year?
Yes, and so, and I found, actually, with the feedback, majority of, you know, from the public hearings, the majority of the feedback was very positive, and from the Sex Education Advisory Board. However, the questions that we dialogued with in the Advisory Board and some of the concern questions were honestly, they were things that I think were not really known about the current curriculum. And so I think having it very, I think a bonus from things we've learned out of COVID is to be very transparent. We could post everything right on the website, the lessons were all right there, and so a lot of it was a misperception of what was being taught in the schools, and so it was just very, very transparent, where previously, you know, every, and currently, every parent has the right to review curriculum and opt out without any penalty, but that would look different in the past. You know, they would have to contact the school and come in and look at materials, it wasn't just available on a website, and so a lot of the questions were about that. So the major changes, you know, really had to do with the standards, and so consent had to be added in there. We had to add in sexting and harassment, the laws and policies. We had to add in identity orientation expression. So those are the things that changed due to standards. As far as the last time, you know, there might have been a, like a materials update, like maybe a video that was approved for use, but it's been probably close to a decade since the whole curriculum was reviewed and looked at.
So this is maybe vintage 2010, and now we're in 2012.
Probably, I think it was around like 11 or 12, actually. Yes.
A decade. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so that's where the long overdue came from.
I have a question. Is, is body shaming a part of this curriculum, or is that considered outside of the scope of Sex Ed?
That would be outside of Sex Ed, but that's definitely part of the health education curriculum.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're welcome.
Do we have to vote on this?
No, we have. Someone, someone should make a motion.
Could I ask one more quick question? Can you just run down, because I, I don't really know, it's, we start Sex Ed from the, the first lessons is in 7th grade?
Yes. Well, let me back up. By Michigan law, we have to provide HIV and AIDS education at every building level, so at the elementary level, the middle level, and the high school level. And so we do that at the 5th grade levels, like our elementary, and then it's typically done in our 8th grade level or 7th, somewhere in the middle school range, just depending on building and like the teaching structure, and then at the high school. And so.
So the Sex Ed is part of the health requirement in high school as well?
Yes. Yep, and so, and HIV and AIDS is a component of that, and then sex education is larger. And every district has to provide HIV and AIDS, it's up to a district to provide sex education.
Thank you. Okay, we, I would call for a motion, please.
I move the Board of Education to adopt the sex education curriculum for grade 7 to 8 as presented.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, and thank you for bumping it up, I perceive that.
Thanks, Angie. Okay, may we take five minutes, just for stretching legs and so forth? Okay, we'll be back at 9:20. All right, we're back in session, all. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 7D, Mitigation Measures and Protocols Discussion. I'm not, Pat, or Superintendent Watson, are you leading that discussion?
Yes, it was just an opportunity for the Board to ask any updates regarding strategies and mitigation, now that we're three weeks in school, there's.
I, I think I might have been the one that asked for it, and that's exactly what I wanted to do, just see, I know, I noticed that there's signs now in all the buildings, great, and I wondered if there had been any issues, you know, are people, are students wearing them more, less slipping down past the whatever? I forget what the word you used, but when they, they continuously drink so that their masks can stay off, I mean, are those kind of situations kind of more at a minimum?
Continuously improving, you know, everyone settling into the routine with being back in school, the expectations, and kind of like I said earlier, by visiting the buildings, people are happy to be back. The students are happy to be back and see their friends, you know, in particular, you could just feel it, especially with the younger children, and being around all their friends in school. So, yeah.
I noticed from the pictures that our, our interns took, that they were, all the, even the kindergartners sitting in circles, were properly masked, and they were, looked like they were having fun. I mean, you couldn't really, I mean, they were outside playing and sitting in circles, and so it looks like they're carrying on as normal, just masks, so.
Yeah, we're trying to really focus on instruction, and, you know, it's helpful that the students are following all the rules. We've got great students, right? You know, they understand expectation, they do what's expected, but we've really, kind of what I, echo what I said earlier, we have 37 more weeks to make a difference. So all that we can do to support everyone that's in the building every day, and to support our parents, so they get the best possible education, so excited, you know, personally, I'd love going in, I can't wait to have my opportunity to go in and read, and I've set that up with a couple of classes, I'm looking forward to that, and it's just been a great start to the school year, it really has.
I, I have a quick question, and I, I should have learned these terms a long time ago, but are we, are we MERV 13? What, or what MERV are we at for the HVAC or the filter?
I believe we're 8 to 10.
Okay.
Once you start, MERV 13 is going to filter out a little bit more.
Okay.
But it's also going to take longer to have the exchange rate go through by trying to retrofit those areas. For larger areas, we've also added HEPA filters.
Great.
That are HEPA certified, and those are highly effective, and if you want data on that, I've got all the research on that as well.
Yeah, I just listened to a very interesting podcast from a few physicians, and the MERV, the HEPA, and open windows, really.
Open windows, long for a cross breeze, going outside more often.
They said UV light, and then there was one other thing that wasn't.
There's ionization, there's other different things.
They said they put no stock in UV light or ionization, so for what it's worth, these were, these were Harvard people, oh God. Yeah, right.
I got the, the air exchange wrong, and I said 250, and someone said, "Okay, you're then in a hurricane." So it's 25 repetitions per hour, I guess, that, that's the.
Yeah, just, just having, I mean, we're, we're cold, we're getting colder now, but having those windows open, like.
In, sorry, in the spring, we check more often, like when the cottonwood trees start to shed and things like that, because that impacts the filters. We're also fortunate, as a district, we have HVAC technicians as part of our staff. Many districts have to outsource that and have it checked when they bring in a subcontractor. We're able to do that anytime we need it. Our goal is to keep kids in school, right? And, and again, educate them the best we can this school year, so everyone's, all hands on deck to make sure we are keeping our kids in school by doing what we can.
Do you know how many are in quarantine at this time?
We currently have 19 in quarantine right now.
Okay.
I wish it was zero, but that's where we're at as of today, before I came to my 5 o'clock meeting. I know there are other districts that are well above that, but we'll, you know, we keep doing what we can.
Okay, anybody else have a question or comment? Okay, thank you. All right, 7E, Modeling and Building Mutual Respect. Siva, floor is all yours.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. So I've got just a few slides to talk through, that's going to drive. Just a little bit of background, this is really focused on reaching out to our community. There was concern among the administration, well, it doesn't really affect our students. There was concern among board members, how does this affect us? It's the community. So I put a few slides together, it's very generic, motherhood and apple pie, but I think there's a lot of food for thought in here, and I just meant this as a thought starter, and, and let's see where it goes. So the board itself has spent a lot of time over the last nine months, at least since I've been on, focusing on doing a lot of catch-up work, core values, vision, mission, that you can see behind us today, and, and I think we've made a lot of progress on working together and focusing on what our students need. But there's a large element of community outreach that we really haven't had time to focus on, and clearly, the pandemic made things worse, or made things more challenging to reach out, and, and so maybe now's the time to address it. Because if you really think about it, that, if you could go to the next slide, please, you know, just touching on the background here, you know, the divisions in our community probably predate our, the pandemic here, right? But COVID's only accelerated that division, and, and really, it's come back to the forefront now with masks and vaccines, and we, as a board, really wish to reduce the acrimony and, and really, the, the fear between both sides out there. And that fear is very real. People are talking past each other and not wishing to come together. So we, this is just a thought starter and a way to engage each other and, and consider a variety of viewpoints. So if you could go to the next slide, please, think about, so really, we, where does this connection to students at all? Well, first off, here's what we expect from our students, and students spend over 10 hours a day outside of school, if not more, and they're spending time with their parents and, and other community members. And, and really, if you think about what we want our students to, to, to focus on, that's not that different from what our community members should be focusing on. We really should be looking at multiple perspectives, respectful dialogue, you know, grappling with complexities. If, if our parents and community members could think through these and set an example for our students, they're doing all of us a favor. So that being said, how can the board help? Next slide, please. So really, we're working through building respect for each other, we've had a few workshops, but we haven't had the time to reach out to the community. And, and really, we're asking the community to reach out to us. You know, I've heard from a few parents on both sides of this divide, both sides felt there was a need for this to be talked about today. Of course, the, this all came about because of the list, but the list is really the end result of bubbling up of frustrations over the last, you know, 18 months or, or longer, right? So how do we work together as a community to build trust? Let's be real. If you think about these two communities on either side of the divide, the other side is not going to go away. They're both going to be there. How do you, what do you stand to gain by throwing shade at the other side? It only fuels the distrust and the mistrust and the hate, and really just feeds on itself like a cancer. So we really ought to stop this and, and really try to reach out to each other, and I don't know how. And so I'm throwing out to the board today, I'm throwing out to Pat, what we can do as a board is really try to talk to these parents. Maybe if they can't talk to the other side, they can talk to us. I know the, the seasoned veterans on the board here have had, you know, office hours over the years in the past, probably less of a need for it back then, there's probably more of a need for it now, and I don't really think we need to go back to office hours of that sort. But clearly, if we were to meet, like some of you said, consider talking at Starbucks, maybe it's not all board members, maybe it's one or two, with interested community members who want to reach out, I think we ought to consider that, but it all comes down to the community members should be comfortable enough wanting to reach out to board members. I don't know how much that's happening today. I had to actively reach, well, a few members reached out to me, and I've started the dialogue, but there's probably dozens out there with, with opinions who weren't comfortable enough sharing their opinions with us. So I really urge the community, pick up the phone or send an email, I'm sure we can make time for it, I mean, they really would like to hear from you. Regardless of which side you think we're on, I think we're all open as a group of seven adults, eight adults, willing to talk to you. So, so please, reach out to us, would be my message to the community. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it, you know, over to my fellow members here in the, in the podium here, and, and, and Pat. So maybe we'll go around, Michelle, do you want to start?
Choose me first, right?
Yep. So, yeah.
I, I, I would, if you go back to the portrait of, of America, and I would definitely agree with you, if you're asking for our students.
Michelle, could you get a little closer to the mic? Thanks.
I don't think my microphone likes me very much. I, I just think that if we're asking for our students to present themselves in a certain way, right, and so, and that they're remaining in respectful dialogue, and they're interacting with one another in a respectful way, it's almost like as if we're asking them to learn how to teach us. But it shouldn't be that way, right? And I think that what you're asking is for us to be examples that we are asking for our students, our, our young students to do, right? So I, I think it's a great starting point for open conversations and dialogue, knowing that we stand for all students in, in our community and not one population of students, right? And so as we are welcoming all types of feedback from our community, we don't want to just always hear one side of the story, like you're saying, but we don't want to divide ourselves either. So respectful dialogue, but at the same time, knowing that there's always going to be, you know, one person has varying different aspects of, of the conversation, but respecting the fact that we're not always going to all disagree, but we, can we at least come to a point where we're, we're on equal ground, right? But can we at least come to a point where we're on equal ground, right? And so I think the disposition toward taking responsibility or responsible actions. So how do you respond to the situation as opposed to being more reactive, right? So do you react or do you respond in a better way when you disagree with a situation, right? And then taking appropriate measures as opposed to reacting with your emotion, right? And so what guides the conversation? Is it that, your gut reaction, or is it more or less a thought-provoking conversation? So I agree, in your next slide, we talk about trust. The very last part about building that relationship is about trust. And I will hope that we are showing our community that we want that relationship and we love to continue to build their trust as a collective and not as a divided organization. So thank you for this presentation, Trustee Kumar.
So Siva talked to me a few days ago about this concept based upon another school district in the area that had done something similar. And I first said, but wait a second, we already have. We went through some of this six months ago or so with our core beliefs and values. And I just pulled it out as you guys were talking, where it says things such as, when I'm going to say, very often it says student, but it should really almost say every student and adult deserves trust in an empathetic environment where everyone feels safe and valued. We must value and build upon the strengths of a diverse community. We must cultivate an environment where all students and adults take responsibility for their behaviors. We must cultivate a culture of congeniality, collaboration, transparency, and honesty. While these core beliefs and values hadn't been really looked at for 25 years, we took the time to develop them. But that's the easy step, that's the easy job. Talk is cheap. It's easy to write things down, you know, do as I say, not as I do. And I will admit, I'm as guilty, even maybe most guilty, that I very often do not treat people with dignity and respect. And it's something I'm working on. But all of us and the community, as Siva says, need to work so hard, especially in this pressure cooker that we've got with COVID. It causes us to, you know, go to our corners. And we need to find that common ground and really work together and try to really live the core beliefs and values that we took so much time in writing. But now we have to actually do the hard work and actually make them happen.
I think we're at the point and reminded of something that was taught a long time ago. Talk less, do more, right? I see in front of us, we have our Board of Education Dialogue Protocol, we have Portrait of a Learner, right? The different dispositions we're talking about right now. I think the expectations start with us. If we can't follow them, how can we expect anyone else to follow them? Everyone's watching. You know, our meetings are must-watch TV. I hear from my former students, we can't wait to watch the meeting. What do you mean? Well, we want to see what's going to happen. Like, it's an event. So I think this conversation is important. It's not just our two student interns that are watching. When I visit the high school, kids are making comments to me about the board meeting. They ask me questions about what they saw and what it meant. So if we're going to say these are the expectations, then we need to do it and not be hypocritical and not make excuses when we don't do it. We're going to disagree and that's okay, right? But I've had conversations with all seven of you over, since I've been here. And one thing has come through every single time. All of you care about the kids. You want the kids to achieve, you want them to be happy, you want them to have the best of everything in every building and do everything we can. So there's no question where everyone's heart is. But please, let's not sit here and say this is important and then turn around at our next meeting and have an argument between us because we have a disagreement. It will just be disingenuous and I feel will set us back. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Pat. Paul?
Thank you, Siva, for putting this together. I agree. I agree what was said previously, what you said. We need to be a role model for our students. We need to treat everyone in our community, everyone with respect. And I think what I'm hearing from some of the slides is is that we need to be approachable to everyone in our community regardless of their views, which I totally agree. If that's picking up the phone and having a conversation, I guess what you're saying is that's okay. If someone emails the board, someone can pick up a phone and have that conversation, you know, with that community member. That's what I'm hearing, is that's okay. If you're at an event and someone wants to have a conversation with you or wherever you are, that's okay. And I agree, we need to be approachable and we need to be role models for our students and treat everyone in our community with respect, everyone.
Thank you, Paul. Sorry, I forgot to make one comment. These slides were put together by Karen and Rebecca with support from Paul and Pat. So thanks to everyone for helping structure these and have the dialogue on this. Sorry, Jennifer?
Oh, yeah, no, thank you, Siva. This is amazing and it's obviously very timely and always timely. For me, all of this comes down to being willing to really listen to people. And I mean, really just listen, right? Like, not think about what you're thinking, not thinking about what you're going to say next, but really trying to listen to the person you're talking to. Because I think if we're going to make peace in America, it's probably going to be one conversation at a time. And recognizing that everybody comes to their thoughts, beliefs, and values through lived human experiences that are all worthy of dignity and that we can, I mean, that's what America's lost these past few years, is the ability to disagree without letting it stoop to a disrespect and a character abasement level. So I think listening is really important. And I have a little thing on my computer that says, from one of my favorite TED Talks, which says, "Practice rigorous authenticity and do uncomfortable work." Because you can't be courageous and comfortable at the same time. So I think we all need to challenge ourselves to, you know, be those role models for the kids and be good listeners and engage, you know. If community members want to talk, we should just be listening, right? We don't have answers, we don't have decisions, right? We should just, we should be vesicles of the collection of community sentiment and then together formulate appropriate action plans as necessary.
I don't want to say anything that's been said before. Just trying to brainstorm ways that we might be able to help. We do have contact with people with multiple different perspectives. And a lot of times, we don't do anything with that information. But perhaps we could facilitate bringing people with different perspectives together to talk to one another and just know that they have common ground. We ran into this situation this last week and we're talking about police reports and lawsuits when we could potentially be talking about a gathering of these two groups together, whether with or without us. At one point, I assume many of these people were friends or neighbors, or they're neighbors now, you know. They have, you know, they all want the best for their children. So I guess if we can be some sort of facilitative body for trying to bring this, the adults in the community together, let's try to do that. And if we can't be, I would just urge that the adults in this community, just talk to each other, you know. I mean, these things that we're discussing, I mean, it's just mind-boggling that we have to, I discuss making of lists and lawsuits and police reports with regard to the adults in our seemingly affluent community, you know. So that's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you, John.
Well, thank you, Siva, for bringing this to the board. I also saw the, sorry, closer. I also saw the respect contract. I shared it with Pat, I think you had probably seen it before because I know other people shared it with you from another district. I like the way that they did it, it's 10-plus years old. But I agree, we don't need more documents and more contracts and, you know, we need to practice what we already do have. Somebody said today, they gave an analogy that that was really appropriate. It was, instead of putting out fires, we should be preventing fires. I agree, that's what I think we need to strive for. And, you know, Superintendent Watson, when you said people are watching our behavior at the board meetings, I know that that's true. What they don't see is behavior in between meetings. And to Jennifer's point about authenticity, if we're authentic and we treat people and each other with respect, it will be the same treatment between meetings that we exhibit at meetings. There should be no difference. So the way we, if we come to a meeting because something's escalated, because something happened between meetings, that's also, to me, hypocritical. If we're authentic, we strive for that level of civility, respect, and understanding between meetings and at meetings. That's all.
Thank you, Bisha. So where do we go from here? What's our message to the community at large? Is it fair to say we're happy to have them reach out to us? There seems to be a lot of misconceptions about board members to the extent of taking advertisements in news magazines and newspapers. If only people would take the time to place a phone call to reach out to board members, I think the temperature will automatically come down. So I'd really urge the community to pick up the phone and talk to at least a few of us out here.
I just want to caution, I like that idea a lot, but I want to caution, back to, you know, the parameters that President Mallof said. We can listen and we should be, always. We can't make a decision and we can't engage in action. So they should know that before they come to us. We are a listening ear and offer empathy and refer them to the correct chain of command person to speak to. But we cannot resolve problems.
Understand that, but to the extent they have genuine concerns which are not being addressed, I think it's our individual responsibility to bring it to the larger board and give them a chance to air their concerns. And I think many folks in the community feel that their concerns are not being heard. And so I think we need to try to figure out how to address that.
We have a lot of persons in our community who are trained restorative practice practitioners. That is something we could potentially offer to people. Sometimes people don't refuse, sometimes people refuse that in my experience, but that's simply because they don't really know what it is and it seems a little bit scary. But to the extent that we practice this with the students, it is something we could potentially have, is restorative conversations with a trained facilitator.
Could you expand on that a little bit, Jennifer?
Yeah, so I don't know if I'm the best person to explain. You want to come up, Margaret? The philosophy of restorative practices, which comes from restorative justice in the criminal justice system, is that when harm is done, when a transgression occurs, the old model, or the prevailing model still, is to send that person off to the side somewhere, right? Be that jail or detention or to your room, right, whatever it is. And I'm going to let you continue in a second. I just want to say one thing, which is my favorite thing about restorative practices is that, is the idea that you are, that by doing this work, you are building a community that's worth coming back to, so to speak, for both the person who may have caused harm or parties and the persons who have felt harm. So.
If I could just interrupt Margaret. I apologize for not giving credit to Margaret. Martin, Karen, and Rebecca all worked on the slides, so apologies.
I think you gave a good explanation, right? The idea of restorative practices is that when someone has caused harm, whether it is intentionally, unintentionally, that's okay. But it's about working together to repair that harm collectively and that when somebody causes harm, that we don't oust them from the community. Like, when a harm is done to an individual, it actually is a harm to the entire community. And so it's important that we kind of embrace that way. And that's really the idea, right, is to be able to sit and, it's prescriptive in terms of like the questions we ask. It's about, you know, what happened? What were you thinking about at the time? What have you thought about since? What could you do now to make this right? And so that's really important too. And for somebody who has been impacted or has been harmed, to be able to process and say, you know, this is how I have felt that and this has been my experience. And so to be able to share in that and work together towards what needs to happen now. And so traditionally, right, you remove somebody from a community and there's not any healing among the community to bring everybody back together. And when we are a community, we care about everyone. And so there's no need to remove somebody, we want to keep you in the community, we want to care for you, we want you to be able to re-enter in a safe way. And so that's really the idea.
Thank you, Margaret.
Yeah.
What happened three hours ago? And what Margaret just said, what are we going to do to bring ourselves back together again?
Good question, Howard.
Something we should ponder or?
Well, I'm not going to make a suggestion, but, I mean, it was the 800-pound gorilla. She just said it. We need to do something as a team of eight. We worked really hard for nine months with Michelle Harmala and we've regressed. So we have some work to do, folks.
I think that maybe we need to wait 24 hours.
I'm not making a suggestion, I'm just putting it on the table that.
I think if I was in Paul's position, I wouldn't be ready to have this conversation right now. And I don't, I think we've already taken a step tonight and I don't want to put him in the place where he has to sit with the six or seven of us and discuss, you know. in the place where he has to sit with the six or seven of us and discuss, you know, kind of fresh emotions on this. And I think we all could stand to sleep a couple nights on it, and so that we can have a rational conversation about how we can move forward.
Yeah, but we, it would be my hope that this board engages in restorative behaviors, addressing specifically what we have dealt with this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Nothing more from my side? Anybody want to add something?
I just wanted, that microphone again. I just wanted to go back to, you know, a point that Pat brought up, and I'm not summarizing, I'm just, what I remember you saying, and it might not be right, so I apologize.
Closer.
Just be mindful that we can't say we're going to do something and then not do that something, right? And so just moving forward in that respectful space with one another, that we continue to practice what we're preaching, and then not just be something that we enjoy saying, right? And so I do want to make sure we're able to reflect before we respond, and if you know you're pressing, going to push the buttons of the next person is probably something that you shouldn't say, right? So we all know that, not everybody's going through any kind of counseling, but, you know, if you want to, you know, press the buttons of the next person intentionally, you know that's going to make that person upset. So if we can be mindful of one another's presence and respecting their space and making sure our actions are not just our words.
Thank you, Michelle.
I think, sorry, I think maybe the next natural step is when we get the results of the board assessment, we have a conversation about how we improve in all aspects, including the respect and conversation aspect, and that should be fairly soon, I think, right? Everyone has taken that.
I think it's November, I think we finish in September and have it November.
Yeah, Rebecca, just a reminder that we've been reminded, if you haven't filled it out, to get it pretty much done this week.
Well, why don't we, as long as you mention it, can we mention it to the community so they know what we're talking about?
Sure. So MASB, which is the Mission, Michigan Association of School Boards, is a very useful organization. They have a lot of tools, a lot of training for school boards throughout the state. They have a board self-assessment tool, and this is optional, and in fact, even belonging to MASB is optional, but most districts think it's a good idea, because it is. So we have, the board is committed back in February, when we set our internal board goals, to take the MASB self-assessment tool this year and have a professional analysis, and then work on points of improvement from the results of that. So we are right now in the process of filling out the self-assessment tool. It's a lot of questions. It took me like almost 40 minutes to do it, so it's pretty comprehensive. And we will be assessing ourselves and moving forward with that information towards the end of the year.
So that leads to 8B then.
Okay, so yes, okay, so we're finished with that. Thank you again, Seva. So now we're on Agenda Item 8B, Voting Delegates for the 2021 Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. May I have a motion?
I move that board members Howard Barron and Lisa Afros be appointed as voting delegates for the Michigan Association of School Boards 2021 Delegate Assembly on Thursday, November 11th, 2021.
Second? Any discussion?
Second. Let me just explain a little bit, being the historian, and also be involved in this. Michigan Association of School Boards has a whole list of resolutions and bylaws, and the way they change or are reviewed is at an, there's a committee called the Resolution and Bylaws Committee, about 25 school board members from around the state, and I happen to be one of the members of that committee. And we meet starting in February, going through all of the resolution and bylaws, one by one, and saying, does anyone want to make any changes? And we give recommendations to the staff of MASB, who then goes back and crafts the changes, and then comes back to the committee in May of every year. And we vote on actually sending those changes, if any, to the delegate assembly once a year. That happens at the annual leadership conference. This year will be in Grand Rapids, Michigan. So in order to actually pass any changes, you get a ballroom full of people, between 500 and 1,000 school board members from around the state, and only official delegates are able to vote on these changes. So what you're proving today is to have Lisa and myself represent Bloomfield Hills Schools to the delegate assembly of, let's say, 700-odd school board members, to review the recommendations coming from the Resolution and Bylaws Committee.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, 7-0. Okay, that brings us to 8C, the mission statement discussion. I think it is a little bit too late to go over all this with fresh eyes right now. I had hoped to really chug through this tonight, but my personal preference would be just to hold, because you know how this goes. We do a lot of wordsmithing, it gets very particular. I feel like we need to be a little bit fresher for that. So before I take, you know, a poll on that, I just want to remind everyone that maybe we can get a shared understanding of where we are with this. I sent an email a couple days ago, or maybe yesterday. This one on the left, I think, is what went to the administration committees, and the teachers, and the students, right? Now, I wasn't present on August 11th, and my phone connection was poor. I thought at the end of that meeting, there were two mission statements. So if one went for vetting, what happened to the other one?
Well, I think there was a kind of consensus that one of them got more interest than the other.
Okay.
So I think the one that went to the administration was the one that had the plurality, majority of support.
Had more support, okay. So we got the great feedback, which, thank you, Rebecca, we got handouts for tonight. I read through the feedback, and like, in the email I sent you, I found some big themes, which were some comments about deficit language surrounding the term opportunity gap. So that was a theme. Talking more about support and community, just speaking more to our values, that maybe, as written, it's just a little too cold and academic. So that was a little bit of a theme. And that was, that's what I gleaned from the feedback.
There was also the predominant theme of all the, well, JEDI that came from students and from the staff, that we needed to have more specific language in the mission statement regarding that.
Okay. So, and we'll ask, we'll just store these somewhere for next time, but after the last meeting on August 11th, John and Howard and I went through and just were working on it, and that's what, that's what the two red ones are?
Do we have copies of what's here? Is this the same as what we have?
This is the exact, this is the exact same as I put in the email. Okay. So the two, it was too long, so I broke it up. So the two red ones were the one that John and Howard and I crafted, and then I took the feedback from the vetting process, and I rewrote them a little bit, and those are the two blue ones. So I think we should, I don't know if this is on our agenda for the next study session.
Then we have the committee of the whole.
Yeah.
And then we'll have another board meeting like this in four weeks.
Yeah, I think, how about we chug through this at the committee of the whole study session?
I just want to add what Jennifer said, that when John, myself, and Jennifer got together, it really was at John's instigation. John sent the email out to us, so I really want to thank him very much, because he was trying to find common ground between the two versions that we had in the meeting that we had in August, and I really want to thank him for that.
Right. I knew that you and Jennifer, and actually the suggestion of Mr. Crider, who's actually still here tonight, that there was language that was important, and then there was another side to that story, where I believe Superintendent Watson and maybe Margaret at a prior time didn't want certain language, and I was attempting to craft some language that would satisfy everyone. I don't know that that will be the case, but we can discuss that.
And I just want to say, I might have been the one that pushed back against that. I had no idea, I didn't have a good understanding of what the three of you were doing, and I apologize, because I thought we were rehashing something we'd already decided. I didn't realize that you were being proactive about the clause, that the two words that, you know, you could anticipate were going to be picked out in the committee, that it went, or the group that was working on it, the teacher or student group. And so I really do appreciate that you stayed a step ahead, and in anticipation of that being something that was going to be red-flagged, worked on that. If I knew that, if that was clear to me, I would never would have pushed back. I just didn't know that was what was going on.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we don't, can we just agree that it'll go on the next agenda in two weeks? Is everybody good with that? Okay. So 8D, vaccination discussion. Who is leading that one?
Oh, come on.
What's going on there?
Howard.
Pat? Maybe you can give us a little bit of information as to what was in the weekly update and...
Sure. So our understanding currently is the mandate from President Biden will apply to public school employees. So right now, we're kind of waiting to see what OSHA comes out with, and then followed by that, my OSHA will come out with an update as well. And that was just kind of summarizing what was in the update.
Do we have any knowledge of when that would be expected to go into effect?
Not at this point.
Now, we did get some input from our union representatives prior to the last meeting. How is that going to factor into what President Biden and OSHA say?
If it's mandated for, you know, public school employees, then it will be a requirement.
Okay. Now, realize also what President Biden said. It was a mandate for testing with a vaccination opt-out. So it is not a requirement to vaccinate, as far as I understand. We'll see what the OSHA statement or regulation is, but the requirement would be weekly testing. So as that rolls out, I mean, my concern has been, and I said this to Superintendent Watson a few days ago in a private meeting, I personally would like to have all adults who interact with our children to be vaccinated. How that happens, I don't know, and that's really not our job as board members. That's really up to the administration. But that is what my desire is, is that to try to minimize the risk to our children by having all adults, from bus drivers all the way up to principals, to be as safe as possible, meaning to be vaccinated. We will see how the OSHA rule comes out, and if it's mandatory testing, for me, that doesn't go far enough, but that's something that we can talk about once we see the OSHA rule.
Anybody else have a comment? Okay. All right, seeing that, then we will call for adjournment. Thank you.
The gamble.